Is everyone on the call now?
I am. This is Tony DeBoe, stand by.
We do have, it is April 1st in case anyone was wondering, we had a bit of a technical difficulty and I believe Commissioner Henderson will join us in a moment. So let's, I want to call the meeting to order Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this morning. We are on a bit of a tight schedule for several of our speakers and I would like to give the floor, well, do we have any, did we have any public comments? No public input this morning. So I hope you're watching today and I hope you're using your social distancing. I was in the community yesterday, had to remind a few people, but overall I do feel that people are very aware that it's critical for our Oregon numbers to maintain with our proper social distancing. So thank you out there, community, for really doing what you can do best and save lives. I'd like to ask Nathan Garabee to come to the microphone.
So Madam Chair, one quick comment.
Yes?
This is Tony DeBoe. So we've got, we've got a lot of online, you know, using our shoot.org comments section. So we're seeing some online comments from citizens and just letting folks know that I'm reading them, organizing, I've called a few people, emailed a few people back, but not everybody. So just letting people know that if they're following, we're working quickly and decisively trying to get back to you and make decisions about the items that have been commented on. And we'll be talking about that today. So I want to thank people for getting engaged.
Great, thank you. Okay, Nathan?
All right, well, thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to start, give you a little bit, a brief update. So we started tracking this week some social metrics, trying to determine how well we are doing as a county in social distancing and recognizing that it's an incredible sacrifice on the part of our, our, our community and, but it is critically important to stem the increase in cases. And reality, we all know that things we do today, we'll know two weeks from now how well we're doing, right? But, so some of the things we're trying to monitor, so there's, there's a number of online resources now on a group called Unicast. We get a grade of a C and I think that's really common on communities east of the mountains because it bases it significantly on cellphone mobility data and because we naturally drive more, I think that affects that. But I did want to also just highlight where we are seeing a significant increase last week, about a thousand percent increase actually of unemployment claims, which is unfortunate, but for, also thankful for the support programs that are coming out of state and federal government to support.
Do you have that number for us?
Last week was 1,322 for the week of March 21st. The preceding week, week of March 14th, it was 135. We're also monitoring air quality every day, recognizing that this is a respiratory illness and that that could be compounding and our partners with Forest Service and BLM have stemmed their prescribed burn, unfortunately because we need it, but fortunately because, you know, trying to maintain our air quality and limit the amount of resources and contact that their staff have to do to do those. So we are monitoring air quality. We're still in the good category, thankfully. We have noticed a decrease in calls for service into our 911 center by about, oh, looks like about 15% ish. And then another interesting thing is we're starting to get water usage and we noticed that particularly City of Redmond, water usage is up. So we're hoping that's attributed to more hand washing. And then air travel is down 90, almost 93% this week. It, it was down 93% the week of March, or on March 29th and it's been hovering around 92 to 93% the last several days. So talking with the airport, they've seen a significant decrease in domestic travel or into the Redmond Airport. And then also we're watching traffic, so just giving you an example, we're getting ODOT data and at Colorado Avenue, it looks like it's about, it went from daily, looks like daily went from 14,993 to 8,500, so we've seen a pretty significant decrease in traffic. So I think that, I think what that tells us is our citizens and our, our community members are listening to the messaging, but we don't, you know, we don't want to, we want to reward, you know, thank them for that and, you know, be very thankful for their partnership in this because, you know, it takes all of us to keep our community safe. So just wanted to highlight those. I would say that primarily, I'm going to let Heather Kaiser, who's on the phone, talk. So we've, we've kind of split the operations, primarily focusing on health system and public safety and, and that's, I'm working with Division Chief Doug Kelly from Redmond Fire, who's our operations section chief, working with that, working with all the agencies and then Heather's working with Chris Wyler from Health Services on the human services side. So I'll, I'll let Heather comment on, on the human services side. I'm just going to give you a brief highlights. So we're continuing to work with our EMS and fire agencies on procuring and securing PPE and distributing that as we can to them. We are working on mutual aid agreements, some plans in place for use of resources outside normal districts to, to support EMS surge as well. Also looking at a number of different procedures in place to minimize exposure to EMS personnel and get people transported in the most efficient and safe manner possible. Our law enforcement branch is really focusing on streamlining some things to reduce exposure at not only law enforcement officers, but also folks that we have in custody for a variety of reasons, as well as folks that we might need to take to the hospital on police officer holds and, and limit the exposure to not only our, our officers and deputies, but also the, the, our customers. So, and then there's a number of, there's quite a bit of work going around, working with all the agencies too, to provide mutual aid, you know, develop mutual aid plans to support one another if we get into staffing challenges as a result of this. Our hospital, our health systems branch is still continuing to pursue testing opportunities as those resources come in available and supporting that at the clinic and hospital level as the supplies are available.
What does that mean?
It essentially means that there's a limited supply of testing capability, both in the materials to do the tests and the capacity, lab capacity to do it. We're seeing up to 12 to 14 day turnarounds on lab results in some cases and that's just a function of too many, probably too many specimens going into the labs and, and probably not having the capacity to process those.
Can you get a little more granular about who's doing how much testing?
So I can't, I don't have the numbers right in front of me related to who's doing testing right now. St. Charles is testing. They have, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, but they, there, there are some changes in guidance.
Is everyone on the call now?
I am. This is Tony DeBoe, standing by.
Fabulous.
Heather Kaiser.
Heather, okay.
Yeah, Heather Kaiser, standing by.
Thank you, Heather. We do have, it is April 1st, in case anyone was wondering. We had a bit of a technical difficulty and I believe Commissioner Henderson will join us in a moment. So let's, I want to call the meeting to order Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this morning. We are on a bit of a tight schedule for several of our speakers. And I would like to give the floor, well, do we have any, did we have any public comments? No public input this morning. So I hope you're watching today and I hope you're using your social distancing. I was in the community yesterday, had to remind a few people, but overall, I do feel that people are very aware that it's critical for our Oregon numbers to maintain with our proper social distancing. So thank you out there, community, for really doing what you can do best and save lives. I'd like to ask Nathan Garabee to come to the microphone.
So Madam Chair, one quick comment.
Yes?
This is Tony DeBoe. So we've got, we've got a lot of online, you know, using our DSHU.org comments section. So we're seeing some online comments from citizens and just letting folks know that I'm reading them, organizing. I've called a few people, emailed a few people back, but not everybody. So just letting people know that if they're following, we're working quickly and decisively trying to get back to you and make decisions about the items that have been commented on. And we'll be talking about that today. So I want to thank people for getting engaged.
Great, thank you. Okay, Nathan?
All right, well, thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to start, give you a little bit, a brief update. So we started tracking this week some social metrics, trying to determine how well we are doing as a county in social distancing and recognizing that it's an incredible sacrifice on the part of our, our, our community and, but it is critically important to stem the increase in cases. And reality, we all know that things we do today, we'll know two weeks from now how well we're doing, right? But, so some of the things we're trying to monitor, so there's, there's a number of, of online resources now on a group called Unicast. We get a grade of a C. And I think that's really common on communities east of the mountains because it bases it significantly on cellphone mobility data. And because we naturally drive more, I think that affects that. But I did want to also just highlight where, we are seeing a significant increase last week. About a thousand percent increase actually of unemployment claims, which is unfortunate, but for, also thankful for the support programs that are coming out of state and federal government to support.
Do you have that number for us?
Last week was 1,322 for the week of March 21st. The preceding week, week of March 14th, it was 135. We're also monitoring air quality every day, recognizing that this is a respiratory illness and that, that could be compounding. And our partners with Forest Service and BLM have stemmed their prescribed burn unfortunately, because we need it, but fortunately, because, you know, trying to maintain our air quality and limit the amount of resources and contact that their staff have to do to do those. So we are monitoring air quality. We're still in the good category, thankfully. We have noticed a decrease in calls for service into our 911 center by about, oh, looks like about 15%-ish. And then another interesting thing is we're starting to get water usage. And we noticed that particularly City of Redmond, water usage is up. So we're hoping that's attributed to more hand washing. And then air travel is down 90, almost 93% this week. It, it was down 93% the week of March, or on March 29th, and it's been hovering around around 92 to 93% the last several days. So talking with the airport, they've seen a significant decrease in domestic travel or into the Redmond Airport. And then also we're watching traffic. So just giving you an example. We're getting ODOT data and at Colorado Avenue, it looks like it's about, it went from daily, looks like daily went from 14,993 to 8,500. So we've seen a pretty significant decrease in traffic. So I think that, I think what that tells us is our citizens and our, our community members are listening to the messaging. But we don't, you know, we don't want to, we want to reward, you know, thank them for that and, you know, be very thankful for their partnership in this because, you know, it takes all of us to keep our community safe. So just wanted to highlight those. I would say that primarily, I'm going to let Heather Kaiser, who's on the phone, talk. So we've, we've kind of split the operations, primarily focusing on health system and public safety. And that's, I'm working with Division Chief Doug Kelly from Redmond Fire, who's our Operations Section Chief, working with that, working with all the agencies. And then Heather's working with Chris Wyler from Health Services on the Human Services side. So I'll, I'll let Heather comment on, on the Human Services side. I'm just going to give you a brief highlight. So we're continuing to work with our EMS and fire agencies on procuring and securing PPE and distributing that as we can to them. We are working on mutual aid agreements, some plans in place for use of resources outside normal districts to, to support EMS surge as well. Also looking at a number of different procedures in place to minimize exposure to EMS personnel and get people transported in the most efficient and safe manner possible. Our law enforcement branch is really focusing on streamlining some things to reduce exposure not only to law enforcement officers, but also folks that we have in custody for a variety of reasons, as well as folks that we might need to take to the hospital on police officer holds and, and limit the exposure to not only our, our officers and deputies, but also the, the, our customers. So, and then there's a number of, there's quite a bit of work going around, working with all the agencies too, to provide mutual aid, you know, develop mutual aid plans to support one another if we get into staffing challenges as a result of this. Our hospital, our Health Systems Branch is still continuing to pursue testing opportunities as those resources come in available and supporting that at the clinic and hospital level as the supplies are available.
What does that mean?
It essentially means that there's a limited supply of testing capability, both in the materials to do the tests and the capacity, lab capacity to do it. We're seeing up to 12 to 14 day turnarounds on lab results in some cases. And that's just a function of too many, probably too many specimens going into the labs and probably not having the capacity to process those.
Can you get a little more granular about who's doing how much testing?
So I can't, I don't have the numbers right in front of me related to who's doing testing right now. St. Charles is testing. They have, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, but they, there, there are some changes in guidance related to who gets what tests. And probably Heather or Dr. Conway could speak more to that. But they are. Yeah, Heather can. But our clinics that have the capability are testing based on their, based on.
Can you get more granular about which clinics are, are testing that you're, when you make that statement, who you're referring to?
So I, the ones that I know are testing, that I have heard are testing is obviously St. Charles, Summit BMC, High Lakes, and Heather, correct me if you're here, if I say something wrong. Summit BMC, High Lakes, York Care in Redmond. And I believe Dr. Rose Kenny in Redmond is also testing. But I, I probably am missing some clinics because there's a number of clinics. There's also a clinic on, right there at Colorado in the Parkway that I believe is also testing. But it's based on symptomatic, you know, they looked at, you know, the symptoms of the, the patient and determined based medically if it's a need to test. So we still don't have just widespread community testing, just because, limited capacity to do it. Heather, do you have anything? Is that, did I hit that right?
Yes, you did. And I would add that COPA and, you know, BMC, they're, they are testing. And again, it's based on symptoms, influenza-like illness plus fever. And it really needs to go through providers because they have to get a clinical visit, usually a virtual telemedicine visit first to determine if testing is warranted. Then they order the test, they do a drive-through in most of the urgent care clinics. They come out, they swab, they send the specimen in. So it is happening in our community, just not at the level we are hoping for. And we're beginning to work on that. But I can give some numbers in a minute.
Can you wait, Heather? Because Nathan, did you want to add anything more right now? We need to go to, he's only here for a few more minutes.
Okay, well, I just want to get the full, I don't want blanket statements. I, I'm being asked by people specifics. So I've heard six basic clinics at this point. If, and COPA, is that Central Oregon Pediatrics? Okay, so that's, that'd be maybe a seventh. We'll count them up. Okay, well, I, I'm interested in a little more specifics on supplies, so.
Yeah, I think, I think each, each provider has probably a slightly different cache of supplies. And they are testing them, I think for the most part, most of them are testing based on the guidance that they're receiving from the state and CDC. But ultimately, the way to get tested is if you have symptoms and you're concerned about it, contact your provider. If they cannot test you, then there's a number of other providers that you could always welcome to get a second opinion and see if another provider will test you. I mean, I think, I think that would be, that's what I tell people when they call me. So.
You're saying shop around.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of it is, is if, if you believe you need to be tested and you're, you can't get tested by your normal provider, I, I think they would understand. If they don't have the ability to do it, then there's other providers out there that might be able to help you. The only other thing I want to do is we're continuing to work on the PPE situation. We're shopping and we're the, working with a number of vendors, trying to vet them. We did identify a local person that was able to secure actually NIOSH-approved masks out of one of the few known factories that are actually already on the approved list. And we've actually shared that resource with the state of Oregon, as well as a number of hospital systems and, and working to get those in. And then we are awaiting our shipment. We're hoping to receive our first shipment from the Strategic National Stockpile in the next week with additional N95 masks and supplies that are coming from the federal government.
Yes, that was supposed to ship through to Wilsonville and then it's going to be distributed to every county.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, all right. Great. Nathan, I need to give Janice a minute to talk right now. She could only be on right now. And you, could you have a minute? I don't know how long your report is, Janice.
Commissioner, there, I can push my 10:30. If you want to let the EOC members go first, it's totally fine with me.
Okay, you don't mind? Okay, thank you so much.
I do not mind. Yeah.
Fabulous. Thank you very much, Janice. Heather, did you want to add something? Can you give us a few more numbers?
Sure, thank you, Commissioners. So I just wanted to give a brief update on testing and cases and what we're kind of doing in the public health arena. So as of yesterday, you probably saw that we have 24 positives. And that was actually down one because one of the cases is actually a Washington County resident. So that was transferred to Washington County. So there's increased by one and ours decreased by one. As far as negative tests that are being reported, I, I wanted to give you all an update on that. So, you know, according to Oregon Health Authority, the number of negative tests reported in DSHU County is 247. However, we know that that number is actually quite a bit bigger. And I, so I want to explain what my team is doing around that. So currently, unfortunately, the negative tests are currently being under-reported. And that is due to the University of Washington lab. They aren't reporting negatives to us. They're only reporting positives. So we are working around the clock right now to solve this issue. And we're, and St. Charles mostly uses a UW lab, so that's a lot of tests that are actually negative. So we think we've solved it and we're working with the St. Charles lab and Oregon Health Authority and UW to get this fixed. But I wanted to let you all know, we know it's a huge priority for the community to really have an accurate account of how many positives and how many negative tests we have. And once we get those numbers, we'll update everything. But we're looking at potentially around 400 more additional tests that are actually negative. So I just want to be as transparent as we can on that. We're waiting for OHA. We want to be consistent with the numbers they're putting out.
Yeah, Heather. This, well, hi. So was St. Charles helpful in getting that information to you as, as well? And were you able to solve the problem that the tests, as Dr. Conway described, and were not identified by county? So some Jefferson or crook were being, you know, blocked in. Are you able to solve both problems?
Yes. So Carrie Coe, one of my amazing health nurses, worked with Gwen, the St. Charles lab director. And this is one of her highest priorities too. So it's looking like we're, we might have to put them all in manually, but if we do, we do. But we think that the St. Charles IT is going to be able to get those all inputted into the state database, which is called Orpheus, which is what we use. So that way it will update the OHA numbers as well as our numbers. So there's consistency. What we don't want is inconsistency where we report one number and OHA reports another. So we are hoping to solve that today or tomorrow. And I can keep you guys updated on that. But I just really wanted you guys to be aware that it's, that the numbers are going to be quite larger for negative. And they will be able to release that via each county, which is great news.
Okay, so maybe by tomorrow? Heather, tomorrow, we can hope that that would happen? I mean, you know, if we've, it can't be that many tests. And, you know, if we're talking to thousands, I can understand it. But if, if it's only like 600, I wouldn't think it would take that long to get this information taken care of.
Yes, we are trying really hard to get that taken care of. And, you know, worst case scenario is if St. Charles, OHA, and UW comes back and says, you know, we can't do it, get it all in for a few days, then we'll talk about just putting something on our website that says, you know, this is the amount of negative tests we have via in the tri-county area. And we're working to get updated numbers or something. We understand the importance of this, for sure.
Well, you know, I think you could put that on the website now. I mean, it's true right now. It's been true for two weeks. So why don't you put it on the website today? That this represents only those deals and we're working on it. So, because it's, we're reporting inaccurate information currently about the, in terms of what people read and understand to be the case, so.
So this is Commissioner, Commissioner DeBoe here. So let's, I think Dr. Conway's the one that explained that that long-term relationship, St. Charles with University of Washington as a reference lab, the two labs that work together. So that was in place way before this even started. Being able to get tests to the University of Washington with that existing relationship has been able to expand the capacity, which is very, a very positive situation that we find ourselves in. You know, the documentation of these negative tests got real interesting because it shows a percentage very different when you look at positive tests relative to total tests. But just acknowledging that we, you know, luckily even had this relationship. University of Washington looks like they're kind of a national leader in being able to test, having some capacity and do some deep analysis around the country and the world about these trends. So just, there's an upside to this also.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I do want to add that this is really unprecedented. We, we usually never get negative. So this is a new thing for all labs to report on negatives as well as positives. So they're working hard to get this fixed. And so that's on the testing. And as Nathan already mentioned, that, you know, many urgent care clinics in our area are doing testing. They, there is still very limited supplies. We're looking under every rock with our healthcare providers to, you know, to get more testing supplies. And we're meeting regularly with all of these clinics, actually, there's a call right now that's being done with clinics, to really encourage as much testing as they can do. And we, and I know our joint information center, per clinic discretion, are happy to always promote who is testing. And, and really it's about for people really needing to call ahead to their providers. And it's really a clinical decision between a healthcare provider and their patient as to whether or not they should be tested or not. So we continue to work with all of the clinics on that. And then I, I did really briefly wanted to talk a little bit about our public health team who are working really diligently whenever we have a positive test. Oregon Health Authority is going to be putting out new guidance around, because so many more tests are becoming positive in our state. And it's really taxing a lot of local public health agencies to do contact investigation, case investigation, and tracing. I'm really proud to say that our public health team, we have brought in more nurses within our staff to be able to continue to do case investigation on every single case and case monitoring as far as all contacts. So that's something that, even though OHA is kind of moving away from that, we feel strongly that containment is still a very important piece of this. And so, so that team led by Jill Johnson is, is really trying hard to still put that containment, quarantine, isolation into play and, and calling these people every day. So I, I just wanted to kind of really stress that because they're often kind of not seen. And they're really behind the scenes doing some hard work to try to contain this as best we can. And then one other thing that we are going to start reporting out on the EMEAS team.
Heather.
Go ahead, sorry.
I did note that they had, Oregon Life had posted last night all the nursing homes of the state that had cases, positive cases. And Bend actually has one. And I'd been at that facility earlier, about a couple of months ago because there were, there was grant funding for helping nursing homes do a better job. And I just wondered, have you guys addressed that issue?
So yes, let me work with Jill and her team. Carrie Coe, I think you've met Carrie. She's working closely with all the long-term care facilities on, for infection prevention purposes. And, and I can get more information on this specific case for you.
Okay, yes, thank you. I just, you know, I just think those, those are the most vulnerable. And I don't, you know, I just would hope that we could do something. So to have incredible containment would be critical for any, any elder care facility in our county, in our tri-county region, actually.
I would, yes. And I would say that is one of our number one concerns is, is how to contain and prevent any outbreaks from happening in long-term care facilities. So thank you. I'll follow up with that and let you know. One thing we are going to start reporting on, sorry.
No, Nathan actually said he had to leave now. And he actually had homeless camp signage was attributed to you. Is there any comment you wanted to make about that?
Well, yeah, so through our Human Services Branch, they're working to support our unhoused population, both in shelters, otherwise not sheltered. And then providing information to, to those folks that are residing in camps, mainly around hygiene and just symptomatic awareness and, and how to get assistance if they do develop symptoms. And so that signage, we've identified a number of locations that is either on the way to or known existing residing, residing in camps. We've talked with the cities and the, the DSHU's National Forest. They're in support of providing this information on a temporary basis, recognizing that the camps are not necessarily condoned legally, but recognizing under this circumstances, that's important information to get to them. So we are developing signage to be able to provide that information to everybody because not everybody's as well-connected as us, so.
Okay, thank you.
There's a follow-up to that is, and you said yesterday when offline, we, you mentioned that the COVO is going to get you, they've, they've helped with supplying some things to COVO, which I guess they're going to get today?
Yeah, we're going to get them some N95 masks for their outreach workers so that if they are, if they do run across somebody that is symptomatic, they have the appropriate protection. And then we're also working with them, I think we're getting some hand sanitizer and other resources. We're, we've got some thermometers, no-touch thermometers. There's some back order that we're trying to make available to our partners.
Some of it we still have to get.
Yeah, some of it is just, it's, we're at the whim of every, you know, so. But yeah, we, that, I believe, I think that some of those thermometers are coming in this week, is my understanding. So we're trying to get those out.
Thank you.
I know our pharmacy had ordered thermometers to get good ones.
Yeah.
And they weren't, they hadn't got any yet.
Yeah, the, the, the good no-touch thermometers are about a hundred and some dollars apiece and they're hard to get, so.
Yes. Thank you, Nathan. Heather, did you want to add anything else?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing. A new, a new data that we're going to be putting on our website starting yesterday is we're going to start now reporting total number of DSHU County cases who have recovered. So that right now is nine people. And the way we determine that is a case needs to be symptom and fever-free for over 72 hours. So I just wanted to let you all know that we think that's important information to get out to our public as well.
That's, that's great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
That's great, Heather. So that's nine of the 24?
Yes.
What about?
So we'll continue to report off.
What about the original person that was in the hospital? Are, are they in the nine?
So I, I can, I can talk with you offline about more specific case information.
I just wondered if they were getting better? So, okay, so we have nine of 24 that have recovered. And 73 days is, is what they're considering the standard? The 72 hours?
72 hours their fever and symptoms are free of that. So that's kind of the definition that the Oregon Health Authority and CDC are using.
That's excellent, so.
So my nurses call, yeah. So our nurses call in with them. They're keeping up to date with all the cases. And as soon as they determine that they are recovered, they, they mark that in our system and are able to report that data out. But I think that's some positive news to share with our community.
Do you have, I can't remember if it's on our website of the state, so I get confused. The number of the 24 that have been hospitalized, have we put that out?
Yes, we do put that out. And in DSHU County, the number that have ever been hospitalized is seven. And the number that has been hospitalized is 16. And one is unknown.
I thought it was the other way around, actually.
No, seven, seven.
No, not hospitalized is 16.
So can you say that again?
And we have that on our website.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Seven of.
Hospitalized is seven. Not hospitalized is 16.
Okay.
And then one unknown, which we're trying to determine, but probably a really new case, is one. And we do put that up on our website as well.
Please find that unknown. And you're, and you're.
We will.
And you're, our, we're tracking, yeah, we'd like to know that. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Heather, for joining us this morning. Appreciate the input.
Thank you.
We'll be looking at the website and hearing back from you. And I know Nathan will let me know immediately when we receive that shipment from Wilsonville. Let's hope that, you know, do we need a truck to drive over there and pick it up? You know, what is it?
No, they, they say they deliver, but I tell you what, if that's an option, I'm sure we can make that work.
I mean, we need it as fast as possible.
I, I would, I would say though, that I will express that, I talked with our one supplier that we have ordered masks from. And if you do, I guess this is a point of advocacy, maybe your request is, just if you have opportunities to have conversations with our federal delegation, our congressional delegation, it might be worth mentioning that streamlining the process to get these supplies into the country because there's a lot of, I guess, maybe just regulations and rules about, you know. So it would be opportunities where maybe they could pre-register that so it's not hung up for four or five days sitting in, in regulations to get in. Once the, does come, that wasn't, that was expressed to me by suppliers, saying that is a challenge that they're facing, that they can get it here, but it sits in crates waiting to be processed. So if there's a way that, you know, for our federal delegation. waiting to be processed. So if there's a way that, you know, through our federal delegation, maybe we could get that streamlined. That might just speed up that process getting supplies into the country.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I know we're gonna, we do have a call scheduled tomorrow with Congressman Walden. So that we'll bring that up. And if there's anything else you need to.
I'll, I'll ask him to send me an email with a little bit more information. I'll just forward it on to you.
Okay. That'd be super.
So you can speak to that. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Nathan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying a few minutes past.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I was going to ask, Dr. Wattenberg, is this a good time for you? You're okay?
If somebody else has a time table.
Okay.
I have some degree.
Okay. All right. We'll see if Dr. Conway.
I'll speak first.
Oh, right.
Counteract.
Do we want to see if Dr. Fossett's on the phone? Oh, wait, I need Janice first. I need to do Janice right now because she moved her meeting a bit. Janice Garcia, would you like to address behavioral health for us?
Here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So quickly, since the second of March, we have had an organized internal response that's based on incident command structure, but we're not calling incident command so that we could organize the department's response for providing continued services. So that's been in place for several weeks now. We began screening in early March by reaching out to clients one-on-one and also screening at the front desk and when people called for appointments. And at that point, asking if you were having symptoms or had had recent travel not to come in and to conduct their services by telephone. Since then, we have moved about 90% of the services that we're providing to telehealth options, whether that be telephone or video platforms, depending on what the clients have access to. That said, we still are providing some services in person. And I'll talk about that in a moment. Since the governor's order on March 26th, we were able the day after, on March 27th, to, with the board's approval, limit public access to buildings. So those signs are posted. People have information about how to access our services. And we're continuing to provide services and all behavioral health services with one exception, and that is walk-in crisis services. Walk-in crisis is now being provided by MCAT, who responds based on a phone call. And since the vast majority of our walk-in crisis work is really generated by law enforcement and law enforcement is aware, so far we've not had any issues with being able to respond to people immediately in crisis. To give you a sense, on February 7th, about 1,700 services were provided face-to-face. And by March 13th, 200 services were provided in person. And I would guess, we don't have the most recent data, but I would guess that at this point, the number of services provided in person are much lower. We have an internal written protocol for staff that identifies the criteria by which we make a decision to actually see someone face-to-face. And that's really based on a couple of factors. One is, are they receiving a service from us that they physically have to be present for, like long-acting injectables or other kinds of physical health monitoring related to their psychiatric medications? Or is this an individual who, if we don't provide an in-person service, is really at risk of coming to be harm or harming someone else significantly? Even if we're in-person services, we are following protocols around keeping distance, offering the client a mask to reduce the risk of transmission of the virus, and using a very, very, very limited amount of N95 masks, goggles, gloves or gowns when we really can't avoid close physical contact such as injection, injection events or clients who are so dysregulated or disorganized that they can't really follow instructions to maintain distance or wear a mask. That said, one of the primary concerns that I have for my staff at present is the very low number of N95s and other protective, personal protective equipment. So I think one of the things that may not be well-understood in the community is that while most of our services are able to be offered over the phone, behavioral health really is an exception to that. I have had clinicians have, in spite of all best efforts, have very direct contact with clients that really exposes them to risk. And it's something that I, I really want to keep on your agenda or on your radar, commissioners, that behavioral health staff are often in a similar position to first responders, going into very difficult situations, having close contact, being in client homes, sometimes having to help clients clean up after, I won't go into detail, but certainly coming into situations where they're physically exposed potentially to the, so we're doing everything we can to protect staff. But this is a real concern for my clinicians that I want to make sure isn't forgotten in the, in the larger conversation. The volume of services is certainly down. There are people who are participating in telehealth services, but probably for shorter duration or less billable than when they were able to come into the office. What we are finding is that for young people, for teens and, and young people, they are finding telehealth offerings to be a preferred way to receive services. So that's been a nice or positive discovery for us. We are working very closely with the EOC. So we have had some of our staff deployed directly to the EOC, Molly Wells Darling, Amber Clag, Colin Thomas, Paul Partridge. These are folks that are doing specific tasks with the EOC and we've filled in behind them. And we are also working now internally on our response to the hospital's anticipated surge. So the behavioral health response and the requests from the EOC is that we stand up a, a series of teams that can respond to individuals in the community to try to divert people with psychiatric emergencies from hospital beds at an even more robust level so that hospital beds are freed up for people who are ill with the coronavirus. And that is my update.
Thank you so much, Janice, for adjusting your schedule this morning. Appreciate hearing from you. And yes, we are, you know, if they need to drive over to Wilsonville and pick up those supplies, I, you know, the sooner we get those into Deshutes County, the, at least better I'll feel about that one small issue. But it's, I mean, it's an enormous issue, but we need to get them here. So hopefully the FEMA shipment will be there and be distributed quickly. And I know Nathan is on that on a minute, a minute basis. So thank you for reminding us again the critical importance for your, your staff. So thank you.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Yeah, Janice, this is Phil. Can, when you said that's volume of services down, how much?
I don't know. We've asked for a report from our data analytics team. And that report actually probably was provided today in our 10-10 daily meeting. But I, I wasn't in the meeting, so I don't have that information. But I'll get it to you since I have it. My guess is that it's down fairly significantly, although we've had an uptick in crisis calls. I only have heard that anecdotally. I still need to see the data related to that, but I can get that information to you, Jan.
You had said originally that on the 7th of February, I believe, you had 1,700 in face services. And then on March 13, you were down to 200 face-to-face. Is that correct? That was part of your report?
Correct.
Okay. So now you're saying that we're probably below even that 200 face-to-face?
Yes. And that's just the face-to-face count. That's not the count of total services provided. That's, that's just, we wanted to take a look at how quickly we had moved from in-person to telehealth services. So that only represents in-person contact. But I think it gives you a sense of how many people still needed to be in-person and what that means for my staff in terms of working in an environment where they are, they are managing some risk.
Yes.
Um, what about, so down to below probably 200 face-to-face, because that was March 13 before, that was the day after, I think, or maybe that was the day of our first case or the day after.
Yeah.
So you'll get back to us on kind of what the face-to-face is now, if we could. And then, do you expect it, if this continues, do you expect it to continue to go down or will it increase? What, what are your kind of expectations that way? Not face-to-face, but service, service generally?
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner, it's a really good question. So my expectation, my best guess is that some of our services in our outpatient world, so that these are services to people who may be slightly lower risk than the folks seen in our intensive services, I expect that those will continue to decrease to a certain level and then level off. The other piece to consider is that many of our staff are now being asked to respond or participate, participate in EOC requests to do things like bring food, bring basic need supplies, do check-ins with vulnerable individuals, not all of whom are our clients. So staff are very busy doing things that are not necessarily billable encounters or billable services. We are asking that they track those with non-billable ways to report their work. But there's definitely a shift of work away from our traditional billable services towards other kinds of addressing basic needs and outreach and supports for individuals in the community. I do believe that, let me just say, first of all, my hope is that our community does not experience a crisis at the level we're seeing in other communities. That's, that's all of our fervent hope. However, should we experience that crisis, I think we're going to see an uptick in people reaching out to us for support around grief, anxiety, loss, or having a recurrence of symptoms that maybe had been managed really well. But with all of the pressures and all of the exposures that people are having to difficult news and information or infectious losses, there may be an increased need for behavioral health services. Going forward, I believe that depending upon the nature of the economic downturn related to this crisis, you're going to see more members on OHP, which will increase the demand for services in behavioral health inevitably, and more people struggling with the kind of things that people struggle with when they're experiencing economic hardship. I know that's a long answer, but we're guessing here.
No, that's, that's great. That's, you covered a lot of stuff. That, that's great to hear that. Great to hear that you are able to have some of the employees in the department working at, with EOC. That's a, I kind of visualized that, but I didn't know if anybody said it. So that was, that's a great, that they're able to do that. And I'm glad you're monitoring the, you know, the hours on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Janice. Okay.
Okay.
Have a wonderful day. And just remember, we will get through this. And I appreciate you being there and heading your program. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioners. I will sign off.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson, I just realized that Kathleen, as we're now almost 11, when can she come back on? Could she come back on later?
Kathleen, are you on now?
I am on now.
Okay.
I got a note after the meeting started. She was able to delay her attendance at the other meeting. But I'm not sure if Kathleen, if you're able to cover the revised leave policy now or at a later time.
We still have Dr. Conway.
It's possible. It's a burden. I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say that it would, it would be better for my schedule if I could do it now, only because the leadership forum is started and the Q and A session, which was due towards the end of it, is probably the point that I should be attending, which would probably be closer to about 11:30 or even 11:45.
Okay. All right. So you wanted.
Obviously, our.
I've got quite a few questions on this now that I've read it.
Yes.
How long you're planning for, but.
Yes.
I don't actually have to use it in.
Okay. So if we want to go through it now, my first question is why, do we call it Novell or Novel? Why can't we just call it coronavirus, COVID-19?
In terms of the policy title?
Right, exactly. I mean, I see that we have, Novel is everywhere. And I'm wondering why we have to call it Novel. When coronavirus clearly, COVID-19, people clearly know what it is.
We could change the title of the policy. I think it was kind of what was in standard use back, you know, which seems like forever ago now, but really just a couple of weeks ago when we started working on the policy itself. But, you know, it is something that we could change away from the novel, novel coronavirus to just COVID-19.
I mean.
It's novel because it's new. So that, that, that is the title of the virus. So it's a brand-new coronavirus. There's many, many different kinds of coronavirus, including MERS and SARS. So it is novel, a new coronavirus. So that is the official terminology. So we can choose to use it or not. COVID-19 is just the same level of specificity, but I think novel is appropriate.
Okay. And then my question on the first page, you changed the word from quarantine to social isolation. And yet the next word says quarantine again. So do you not want to change it to social isolation, colon, social isolation separates and restricts the movements? Did you see what you did there on that first page?
Um, I, I did. And I apologize, actually, my remote session just crashed, so it's reloading. But I, I'm familiar with that section. The, what we tried to do was actually match that, which yes, it is, while I recognize that those are separate terms probably in the public health community surrounding this, what we tried to do was match up our policies in terms of how those, those words quarantine and social isolation tend to be interchanged. So that definition now matches the definition of the travel policy.
Okay. So you're saying that social isolation is quarantine, separating?
In, in terms of our policy and its definition, yes.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. So Commissioner Henderson?
So just so I'm clear, this is the document called Temporary Policy Response to Novell Corona, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. So I spent some time on this last night, Kathleen. I think, I don't know who made all these changes that are, I find this extremely hard to read and understand what it's doing. So that's my, just my oversight. If this is a policy that a, an employee is supposed to get, it's, it's kind of organized like a very complicated statute that the legislature would write. Let me summarize what I think we're doing is we're, and then tell me if I'm right or wrong, because I, I'll just put up my words. I think what we're doing is we're saying that a new, it's either one bill or two bill, were passed by, I believe it's the federal government, to say that there's new leave rights that will adhere to, that people in certain organizations will have. And then all of these exceptions where we're defining emergency responders and healthcare are people that one way or another may not be able to have that benefit, that extended benefit, that earlier benefit that's created by those two statutes. Is that correct, essentially what we're doing?
Correct. So it was, it is one bill and it has, there's many provisions within the bill. But the two provisions that we are, that impact us regarding leave, Deshutes County regarding leave or, or pay for leave, are the emergency paid sick leave provision and the extended FMLA provision. And so.
So.
The policy we'll say is high level.
Okay. So can I suggest then, if what I said is kind of what the, what is being indicated, that in plain language should be somewhere in this document. The purpose doesn't really say that. The purpose is kind of a general, I don't know, like a, I don't know, just interdo, there's not much there. There's not much there. It says, "We value our employees, but we need, there's new challenges in the community," basically. So that's one thought I have. The second I have is, did, so then, did someone go through the statute and pick and choose parts of it to put in this policy? Is that what's, what all of this stuff that's added at the back is? And it looks like that to me.
So it's, it's a high-level overview that's in the policy. We have two, we've established two forms, and then, and it's an FAQ-style document that goes into more detail about the qualifying for the leave or applying for the leave. And there are really kind of two areas that the county has some decisions on, and that would be the emergency responders portion, and then the other piece is the top-off provision, which is where employees could elect to add to it.
My first question was, though, my question actually, Kathleen, my question actually is, did someone just take language out of the statute and then put that in? Or is this somebody's effort to interpret this statute?
There's probably a little bit of both in there. We did take specific language out about the qualifying events, what, what scenarios constitute an employee being eligible for the leave, for the pay, so this would be verbatim out of there. And then it is summary of the emergency paid sick leave or emergency FMLA, or I mean, expanded FMLA component. So I would say it's both. We have direct language as well as a summary of the two provisions.
Okay. My next question is, is our, it, this creates some complicated in a way assess, or access to these benefits, in terms of, you have to read and figure out if you're in one of these categories, and then you have to, I guess, put in, put in for a leave, which is great and it's understandable, but there seems to be, there's these carve-outs of people that don't necessarily qualify for that, which are pretty extensive. Are we, are people applying for this or asking for this currently in the departments? Or is this, what do you think the usage of this particular leave will be, or any projection?
We are, we are definitely seeing a lot of interest right now. People are asking, where, you know, where's the form? How do I sign up? So I do expect there to be high utilization specifically around the school, the leave for school.
All the people, you're talking about all, all the people, all the people that are, who have kids at home, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Either the school is closed...
Correct.
Or the childcare provider is unavailable in view to COVID-19.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, either number five.
And, and not able to telework, right? So there are some provisions that, you know, if there's the ability to telework in there, you know, we can look to adjust people's schedules to maybe support telework and childcare so that they're not necessarily having to take leave from work, especially if they are, you know, if their work is still ongoing. I would, you know, use HR as an example for that. While we're not necessarily emergency responders under the definition, there's definitely a lot of work regarding the county's response to COVID-19 that is keeping HR quite busy. And so, looking at if any of HR's staff, and this is just an example, were to request this leave, you know, first I would really work with them to try and see, is there an opportunity to adjust schedules and telework, because they really do need my staff working? Which kind of gets us to the component of the emergency responders. The, we've talked with our other organizations about what they're doing, and one of our partner organizations in the community, they're just doing a blanket, not eligible for any, any component. We think that that seems to be a little bit more drastic than where we're seeing most other organizations going, which is that it, you likely won't be eligible for the school closure provisions, but of course, if they were to be sick or if they were to be caring for a family member with COVID-19, we would, we would not want them responding to work, and therefore, they would be eligible to tap into those provisions of the, the new law.
So another question at the back on page four, there's a provision about policy guidelines in the first paragraph there, and read as, "Emergency responders and healthcare providers may be exempted from eligibility on the Families First Act. Each situation will be reviewed individually." Who will that be reviewed by?
So that would be in partnership with Human Resources and the Department Director, elected official, or their designee.
So which?
In, in partnership.
So you're anticipating that each, each time someone wants to be exempted, they all, several of those people get together on this and talk about it and vote or something?
Correct. Right, so currently, the process that we have set up to, which is all of our existing FMLA or, well, our existing leave request, emergency, well, FMLA request or OFLA processes, is that the employees submit a form to HR with an acknowledgement to their supervisor. And what we're asking is that if the supervisor feels that it's one that they can't support under the emergency responders or healthcare provider exemption, that they contact us and we, you know, discuss why that is, and go from there.
So, this is Commissioner DeBonne, so I can envision the fact that it would be kind of the scenario, that then if it's a simple, standard scenario, or you've seen it before, you know that something fits into that scenario, but it's something different, then you have to take more time and brain space to figure out, okay, you know, does this fit what we've done before, or is this something radically different? Let's get this escalated to the next, you know, manager, department head, or elected official, because there's the other elected official. So, I mean, I could see this scenario, it's just kind of bubble up if they're unique and different.
Exactly.
On page seven, Kathleen, the E on employee got missed on all three points on that page. It starts with M, so somehow on your formatting, that dropped off.
It did, and when, when you accept all the changes, for some reason, it, the, the E, it matches right up to employee, and I apologize, I couldn't get that to kind of look better on the track changes.
Okay. Well, I just was like, okay, all right. Do you have any...
I, I agree.
Well, it just was something more on our sheet. Commissioner Henderson, did you have any more questions?
This is Commissioner, hang on.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner DeBonne.
So just kind of figuring out, you know, what, are we ready to kind of get this finalized? I guess this is a question for Kathleen, being the red line, knowing that this is a temporary policy that we're going to be reviewing in the future, and also plugging in kind of the, the facts as we know them right now. What's, what's the next step for today?
When will we review this again, Kathleen?
Well, it's set to review every 14 days, you know, or as necessary. Again, this law is effective today and runs through the end of the calendar year. Now, the, those provisions, however, there are other components to the policy, the temporary policy, for those folks who don't fall under, wouldn't be eligible under the law, and so I would imagine that we would need to review those, you know, regularly. I would say at least the 14 days.
Okay.
Well, in, in light of kind of version control and, you know, managing on the fly, I'm supportive of this document, knowing that we're going to get right back to it, and this is, that partnership with our staff and the management, just really kind of putting on paper what we, what we think's going on the best we can right now, what's, what's fair and equitable in the environment. So, and if we're ready, I'm ready to move a motion to approve this. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay. Mr. Henderson, did you have any more questions? We do have a motion on the floor.
Well, I'll make that motion officially. It's a motion to accept the proposed changes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to support this, so, for the unclarity of the procedures, the, just the confusion in the document, I don't know if, so...
Can I offer, we have the forms that have been finalized, and we have the SAQ that goes into more detail about the process itself. Commissioner Henderson might be more than happy to provide you those or go over those in detail with you. The, you know, in, in reality, it's a, in terms of maybe not approving this policy, but we have a requirement to provide this benefit to employees effective today. The other option is, there are two considerations in front of the bill which are included in the policy here. It's how do we want to exempt emergency responders, and then if we want to allow the top-off provision, and that is the piece that I would need direction on.
So just to clarify, I'm not, I'm not against the policy. I think we should be allow, you know, following the law to, to provide the policy, but there's, it's not just, I mean, the, the emergency responders groups are a very widely defined group of people, and then you have the healthcare providers, which is another widely defined group of people, and then you have this kind of unclear who decides if it allows. I just, I think some of this should be better defined, so that's all I'm saying. So that's, that's what I'm voting on.
And I think there was purposefully some broad definitions to allow department heads and elected officials, who may be making their own decisions in that, allowing them the ability to do so.
Well, yeah, I don't know who created them, I can't tell that. I mean, it seems like we're on the gun to approve it, so, but it seems like, you know, some of those people, I'm not sure that just the department officials decide those things. So I, I guess that's what I'm trying to, that's kind of my problem with some of those definitions. I can't tell what's required by law and what's created by, you know, HR or whoever, and so I'm, there may be people that come in under an emergency responder that really are kind of, they may not really feel like they're an emergency responder that shouldn't be able to take leave, and so what do you do with that process? What's the, what's the appeal process if somebody decides that? Or it just seems like it gives a lot of arbitrary power, so to speak, to the department heads to, I don't know, just that's what I'm saying, is it's really unclear to me, so...
I think that there's a couple of ways to move forward with that. First off, those definitions are actually, they were, they're definitions pulled from the Department of Labor's definitions under the act itself. However, they were broader, in that they included additional positions that we don't have here at the county, and so we, HR did go through and remove those. They were limited to positions that exist. I think that there is, typically, our policies are broad and allow some determination to be made, interpretation of that by the department head or the elected official to determine how they want to run their organization in partnership, making sure that they're within the guidelines of the law with HR and legal, which is the plan that we have going forward. If we, the alternative method would be to work with each department right now to identify those, my concern is that this will likely evolve or change based on the response itself to, the county's response to COVID-19.
So Kathleen, you mentioned two decision points, emergency responders and topping off. Could you explain those? So this is, this is kind of discussion in the middle of a motion, but I just want to be clear and support you, given your guidance, no matter how the vote goes.
Thank you. The, the areas that we do need direction, the emergency responders, how the county wants to go about determining what, if any, exclusion should apply there. The way the policy is written is that there is the ability for the department head or the elected official in partnership with Human Resources to establish what leaves, if any, the employee involved under that would not be eligible for. And the second decision point is the top-off provision.
So let's, let's stop there. So I'm thinking the kind of the scenarios again. So somebody is asking for leave under, I see an FF CRA, and then there's, but the ask from management is, no, please stay with us because you're so important as an emergency responder. Is that kind of the scenario we're talking about?
It is.
Okay. And then, so we've got words here to talk about this, for the purpose of employees who may be excluded from paid to leave or expanded family and medical leave under FF CRA. What's the guidance specifically? What's, what's the decision space? Do we have this in, the whole, the whole thing is in there or not? Is that it?
That, as it's written, that discretion is delivered to the department head to make. We can put in here in the policy who specifically would be excluded. Again, I think the concern with that is, we do need some flexibility to be able to respond. I'll give an example. If 911 staff, you know, if we were to say that they're not exempted, we can work with them through these, these leave options, if something were to happen to where they've gotten lower than, you know, the necessary staffing levels, we would need to either call people back or get them the option to, to deny access to this, this benefit, to ensure that they have the staffing necessary to respond appropriately. And that could change day by day or week by week, depending upon how, you know, they are active.
And then that could kind of generally go two ways, you know, the fact that there's a justification, this person is being called in for, for, you know, the service and the duty, and then, so they need extra support for other issues like, you know, childcare, family, school, whatever. Or it could just, it could get kind of negative, where, you know, I really don't want to come in, but we're asking you to be here, and, you know, with resistance. I could see, could evolve.
Commissioner DeBonne, so you're addressing exactly kind of what my concern is, and it's on page three. It, here's the, here's the sentence. "If an employee's position provides critical business needs and essential services to the community as determined by the department director or elected official or designee, the director or elected official or designee may deny authorized..."
Leave authorization.
"...leave authorized under this temporary policy and direct the employee to perform the job unless the employee is not well enough to perform the job." Shall be, the decision shall be based upon the director or their elected official or the designer. So this doesn't imply they all get together, it's just whoever. Determination that the employee meets the definition of this policy and in the performance of employee's job duties is essential to the public service and duties can't be reformed otherwise. I mean, that's pretty broad and pretty undefined, in my opinion, and that, and what if they disagree?
I'd like to come to the same conclusion, that these are scenarios that are going to happen, they're possibly happening already, and as they happen, we're going to have to really, you know, kind of, the ones that are more complicated or more contentious are going to bubble up, so I don't mind having these... are going to bubble up, so I don't mind having these words in there.
Who, who do they bubble up to? Is my question, I guess.
Well, uh, as I say, I mean, there's going to be different scenarios, but it's going to be, you know, under, uh, you know, a management type and then a department manager, and then it's going to be a, a decision by, you know, county administration, HR, uh, with legal in, what if it gets more complicated? And then if it becomes a big, uh, you know, a policy decision that, you know, harder, very specific choice, we may be talking about it as a board of commissioners, uh, in support of that department head or other elected official. So, I just asked what I referred to when it's bubbling up. Some things may be a question that gets answered at the next level, and then all of a sudden, some things may just not be clear, and how are we going to get, uh, decisive, uh, you know, action on, on the request?
I really, um, believe if this is going to be into effect for two weeks, we're going to have some unintended consequences, which we need to be made aware of, um, so that we can review this document, Kathleen, um, as soon as possible, you know, if there are things that are going to pop up. I realize that the federal effective date is today, and therefore, um, I feel like we need to go with this document, but we also need to, we recognize that there are issues here that we can see, and I believe that we should, you know, be looking at it at a, on a daily basis for what is happening, and, you know, what our emergency employees are dealing with, and, you know, where, you know, where we can go to follow the law and yet, um, you know, protect positions such as you said, 911, if it's becoming short-staffed. So, um, I, um,
May I offer a-
You know, I believe that we need to vote. Commissioner DeBonne, you made the motion. Mr. Henderson, you seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne, I'm calling for the question.
May I offer a quick suggestion? Commissioners, this is Eric Crop.
Yes, Eric.
Um, based on Commissioner Henderson's point about that paragraph, uh, one idea is to add in a, a sentence or two that the department director or elected official in consultation with HR and legal will make the determination.
Okay. You're suggesting that, um, as a, Commissioner DeBonne?
As we do. Uh, so then, as Commissioner, you mentioned that, you know, as these scenarios are happening, you want to be notified also, as in, uh, you know, some of these will be happening in the organization, and, you know, having them written down and kind of notification gone through management. Uh, I support that also. So, uh, others, yeah, so getting back to specific words, I guess page three, is it then? So in consultation?
The first full paragraph on page three.
Yeah. Consultation is good, I like it.
Um, should, should we get another copy of Eric's, um, inclusion? That, that sentence which you were going to add to that paragraph? Eric, could you, um, get us a copy of that?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to incorporate that change.
You're, you're comfortable with that, Commissioner Henderson?
Well, it's not going to change my vote. I mean, there's, there's, there's quite a few things in here that I'd like to ask about, and I, it seems like we're just rushing to do it, and, so I'm, I'm just, I'm, you know, um,
I had asked you if you wanted, you keep going, because if there's other points, you know, it's fine.
Well, so just from a policy standpoint, um, whoever drafted this, and we saw multiple drafting people have a chance to talk about this and discuss it through, and then we discuss it through in a public meeting with other things on the agenda, but there's things like, one of my first questions is what's, what statute and what isn't, and what's required and what isn't is a, is a follow-up to that, and so we have this whole definition of what emergency responders are. So, I mean, are we going to spend the time to go through it, and it just seems like it's an awkward time to do it? If, so if two of you want to approve it, you can, or we can, if we're going to take the time, it may take some time, because there's, this isn't very clear, and, and there's things like in here, um, so I don't know, what's the scope of what we're going to try to get done today? Are we just, do we want to get something in place, or do you want to actually approve it?
I think you should bring out your issues today.
Okay. Well, I'll bring out some, and I don't know if we have time to, to finish it, but another option would have, would be, would have been to actually discuss this after we, you know, talk about it with the different people, I don't know who drafted what. So in paragraph two, all these people are emergency responders, and there's words like, "That includes public works personnel," which I guess are all the people at the road department, "and then persons with skills or training operating specialized equipment or other skills needed to provide aid in a declared emergency." Does that include phone skills, organizational skills? I mean, who's, is that everybody on the, the emergency team? Then there's a clause, this is also includes any, any individual the governor determines is an emergency responder. So if this is federal legislation, they've given this carte blanche, um, power to the governor to decide who needs to keep working here, and are all of those required, or were those choices? I couldn't tell. And then just to finish the question, the same is true in the healthcare providers. Any healthcare, healthcare providers and employee working at any healthcare center, clinic, local health department or agency, or home healthcare provider, so that's, is that everybody there is a, um, part of that group? And then, this also has this broadening to anybody the governor decides she can do it. So that's it, my next kind of group of questions.
Sure. Those are, uh, the words directly from the statute. Directly from the statute and the Department of Labor's definition of emergency responder and healthcare providers.
So this wording is exact, I, because you said you, I thought I heard you say you cut some things out that weren't pertinent, so, um,
I did, yes. So this is a, um, that has been refined, for instance, there are, um, the healthcare providers, since we do not run a hospital, I removed anything referring to hospitals. So, um, I only kept in the definitions that apply to our group, um, and left in the clause relating to the governor determining is an emergency responder necessary for the response to COVID-19.
So as I read this, then everybody that works in the health department would be a, or in the public health side, which, um, I guess that wouldn't include the behavioral health side, but anybody in the public health would be, these people would have to get permission as an exemption really from the, like, an independent one-by-one, um, lets the people doing inspections, and is that kind of your, there's quite, as you know, there's a variety subdepart-, or, you know, teams in the public health department.
So, we would expect that the department would be determining who within the, um, the public health arena, um, would fall into that category, um, with the recommended change by Eric. If the department were to use the exemption available in this policy, um, it would have to be in consultation with HR and legal, is how I would, uh, interpret application of that.
Well, who represents the employee in all that?
I would likely imagine the union.
Commissioners, I, I may be able to help with some context.
That would be great. Thank you.
So, um, we, we would have to go through this kind of a decision-making, um, exercise whether or not this federal law came into being. Um, we have, as you, we discussed the week before last, we have certain county services that we consider essential, that must continue, law enforcement, 911, you know, things like that. So, under our ongoing regular policy, we have the ability to deny TML, to deny leave, vacation to employees. And in certain situations where we need all hands on deck to perform essential services, uh, we can deny vacation, and we have in the past. So this whole decision framework is similar to that. So the, the law provides a carve-out in those situations where an essential service is involved, and we simply cannot spare, uh, an employee to be home, say, under a, because the schools closed. If they're sick or caring for a sick person, that's different, as Kathleen explained. So, um, you know, again, we would, we've defined what our essential services are, you've seen a list by department. Hopefully, we'll never get there, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to weather the storm without, you know, the, the virus directly or indirectly through a family member affecting a county employee who's performing an essential service. But if we do, we'll have to make those kinds of decisions either under this revised policy or even if this policy didn't exist under our regular TML rules.
Well, as I read this, the new legislation, it's creating a, a new right. It's a new right that you can take leave because you're taking care of your kids because of this, you know, taking other peo-, care of other people. It's a whole new right that's being created. There's a short-term aspect for the two weeks, and there's a long-term. I don't think that's the same as our current leave policy about, I think this is a new right that's being, and I think it's more widespread than what we've done historically in the sense that you're, like, how many people in the public works department are essential? How many people in the health department are essential? It may be essential to have a health department, but how many are essential? And so, if those are the big categories, and then what's the appeal process if someone disagrees? I don't, I don't know if there's a, maybe there's one we already have that we could list in here, but there is nothing here. It's, and that's why I was complaining about the fact that it's this person, or this person, or this person. If it's really all the people, then it should be and. So, I don't think this is very worked out, so, um, what's your response, or what do you think about that?
Well, you said a number of things there. You know, in terms of an appeal, it would depend on the employee in question. I would say generally that, that I, I think the vast, vast majority of our employees recognize their essential function within the county and are going to want to work if they can. But if, if we get to a situation where an employee, um, is being denied leave, whether it's under the federal policy or a regular policy, and, and, and is required to work because of the essential nature of their service, um, their appeal, if, if they're in a bargaining unit, there are grievance processes, uh, defined in those agreements where they can, they can grieve that requirement. If it's a non-represented employee, um, then they certainly can work up through the chain of command to, um, basically informally appeal or even litigate if it comes to that, the application of that particular provision to their circumstance. Again, I, I, that would be an extreme case, but that, that's the way it could play out, and would play out in the case of the represented employees.
Is the paragraph three that we, I read part of, um, is that something that was required by the law, or is that something we created? That was the system we created?
Are you referring to the healthcare providers provision, or definition?
No, on page three is the, uh, where it goes, directors and elected officials and, or designee, that, is that our system, or is that something the, the federal, or the, yeah, the federal government requires?
That's ours. Right, because that's our system.
This is Commissioner DeBonne, uh, that, that topping up, or topping provision or something, I still want to talk to you that just a little bit, so I understand that. Uh, I am supportive of getting to a vote here. Uh, uh, you know, I'm just acknowledging that there was a motion and a second, and there was even a call for the vote, so just trying to get a little procedural also.
Okay. Eric, um, what about Eric getting us a copy? Is that prostitution?
I haven't started that yet, because I was listening in on the conversation, but I can peel off and, and add, add that language, and bring a copy down.
Okay. Could you read it again, please?
It was, um, gee, this is second sentence of that paragraph. "If an employee's position provides critical business needs and essential services to the community as determined by the department director or elected official, uh, the director or elected official or designee may, or, I would insert, in consultation with HR and legal, may deny leave authorized under this temporary policy."
So, so now, instead of three people, we're having five people decide whether leave's granted. Is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, yes.
Well, I should say it's director or elected official or designee, so likely that decision would be happening at one of those levels, um, so it's-
Well, you said before that they're all three going to get together, so now, and that is, I think what you just said is how it reads, it's or, but there's no, there's no process of, of who in the or does it?
So the, the director or an elected official, we have two different titles for a department head, um, that's what that's referring to, and oftentimes, um, and, and our other policies, the director and elected officials have the opportunity to delegate the decision to a designee. So for instance, if George Conway wanted to designate it to Janice in this, um, circumstance because he's not available to make those decisions, um, that would be one example of how that could work. Um, and so that director or elected official or designee is one person. When I was talking about in consultation, it would be in consultation with HR. So if, the understanding was already that if a department had planned to exempt an employee or deny an employee's request, um, that, that HR would be involved in that conversation, the additional language that Eric's recommending is that it's a, it's a requirement now that if a, if a director or the elected official of the department is to deny the leave authorization, that they would have to consult HR and legal on that decision. That's how I'm understanding that, um, added language.
Okay. Um, Commissioner DeBonne? Are you, um, are you ready to vote? Do you, or do you need to see it, hear it again?
I'm, I'm available. Uh, I was on mute.
Oh.
So, is the proposal with the motion on the table to add those words in, words in consultation at this time?
Yes. If the director or elected official or designee, um, they're denying it, then they have to make that denial in consultation with HR
Yeah.
And legal.
Yeah.
To deny the leave, to reaffirm their denying leave.
This is Dave Doyle, sir. Am I clear that Commissioner DeBonne is amending his motion to include the proposed language from Eric?
Mr. DeBonne?
Uh, thank you, thank you for the clarification. Uh, I was just going to make a statement about, uh, you know, maybe it's notification too and not consultation, because, um, yeah. You know, because that, that gives everybody insight into the fact that decision was made, but this is that emergency order temporary, and we don't, we may not have consultation at this, you know, near future. Remember, this is all temporary, it's going to go away when the, uh, uh, emergency declaration is terminated. I, I would support notification to HR and legal, which would generally happen anyways. So we are talking about amending, and I do agree, we're talking about amending the motion because we're getting to a point, uh, to formalize it.
Okay.
Commissioner DeBonne, this is Chris L. listening in. Can I, can I add something? Can I, can I add something to what Kathleen said to address your point?
Please do.
Okay. This, what, what's in the policy right now really reflects what happens currently in all personnel-related decisions that are of any significance with department head. Department head will come to what we call PAL, Personnel and Labor, a meeting that had usually me or legal counsel present as well as risk and HR. And in one meeting with the department head or the elected official who acts as the department head, like a sheriff or a treasurer or a clerk, we consult and ensure that the department head's decision reflects both HR policy, risk policy, and is legally compliant with law and regulatory guidance. Because that's really the process, it's not this multi-stage process, it doesn't involve a whole lot of people. It really just involves the department head or designate, and the department head can be an elected official, a representative from legal, a representative from risk and/or HR. And from that meeting, a decision is made, is to make sure that all those bases are covered. So, it really reflects what is a current practice existing now and which actually, in my opinion, works pretty well. So, if your worry is that this is going to bring in a bunch of different people, or it's going to create this new process that takes a lot of time, from my opinion and from my experience, I just don't think that's going to be the case.
So, are you referring to the proposed changes or the way it was written before the meeting started?
Well, I guess a little bit of both. I, I, I'm, I'm more comfortable with consultation than notification because to me, notification just means the department head says, hey, this is what we're doing, versus consulting with legal, HR, and risk to make sure that what we're doing complies with the law and policy. But to me, consultation.
Good, so, yeah, yeah. So, the words we're getting to basically is the procedure that happens already anyway?
Yes.
Wonderful, that's great news. Yeah, so I'm enthusiastically supporting that then.
And that goes back to the word consultation then, not notification, which I agree with Mr. Bell.
Yes.
That it needs to be a consultation, it should not be just a notification, it should be a consultation. So, according to the, the provisions of this law, which is effective today, it will apply through December 31st, 2020, but we're, we can review it every 14 days. That's, that's on page two, so.
Or, or have it withdrawn?
Okay, yes, if we are so fortunate. Correct?
Right. I, yes, although the law itself will continue beyond to December 31st, 2020. So, my, what I anticipated, if we were to withdraw the emergency declaration, we would likely need to still maintain the policy regarding this, these provisions under the Family First Act. So, likely a revision of the temporary policy to just have the federal component in that.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. So, Commissioner DeBonne, with that amendment to your original motion, I'm asking for your vote now?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne is voting yes. Commissioner Henderson?
No.
Commissioner Henderson votes no, and the chair will vote yes. So, thank you for everyone getting on the line. And we look forward to reviewing this again and hearing about situations in our, in our community of employees that are critically needed at this time. So, thank you.
Commissioner, Chair, one, one quick question, and it, it has to do with the decision that I will read, and maybe I can ask for a motion if the board is prepared to do that. It's regarding the top off provision. The, the law pays a portion depending upon what type of leave, and what is being recommended is that we'd allow employees to use their own leave to make themselves whole. Um, and there's really a couple of benefits to that, to both the county as well as the employee, but technically that is a decision point within the law. Um, so I am looking for guidance from the board on that decision, and I'd be happy to go into detail about what that means, or the, the reason why we, as an organization, came to this recommendation.
Okay, are you talking about the calculation of pay on page six?
Let me see. Um, so, the calculation of pay is that's specific to where its employees may utilize or recruit time off balances to supplement the benefit received under the Family First Act. I, I just wanted to point out that that does live in there and want to make sure that that's the way that works, the board wants to move forward. I know that Commissioner DeBonne had mentioned that maybe additional discussion around the topping off provision needed to occur, but maybe it doesn't?
I support just having that discussion between now and, you know, next time this comes around.
Okay.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, we can get on the phone offline too and talk about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Question?
Do you want to, do you have, can we talk about this offline later?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you for that conversation, thank you.
Okay, so back.
I will sign off now.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Dr. Conway, did you have any comments that you wanted to make today?
No, I know he's flexible, but he's not flexible.
No, he said he's flexible, so.
Well, I'm flexible to, to, to.
Okay. We just need a couple of high points today, that would be great.
First, thanks very much, commissioners, for reaching out to some of our departments and the response is best communicators to speak today, they're much better at this than I am. Key messages, as we've talked about before, and I'm heartened to see that the national administration is really being quite robust about promoting this as well. Basically, stay at home until the worst passes unless there's something that's very urgent, like reprovisioning. Commissioner Adair and I spoke briefly before the meeting about homemade masks, and I think that these are, I think the thing that's emerging as an opportunity with this is I think there's going to be rapid set of recommendations about all people when they're in public wearing masks. And the reason for that is more to protect others than oneself. And the homemade masks, while they don't, they're not going to pass N-95 or whatever, they're very good, as long as you can breathe through them and they have a fine enough mesh that you don't see readily through the cloth, and they're washable, should be very suitable for containing coughs and sneezes. So, it's a very effective way of reducing contagion, and that's one of the reasons why South Korea and its very robust and rapid response recommended that and then required it very, very broadly. The other thing is that while we're witnessing tragedies or unfolding potential real tragedies in some of the large urban areas of the country and some smaller places remarkably like Albany, Georgia, which has, what, 73,000 people and has had over 150 clinical cases, our intention is to do our best to continue to contain contagion in this lower-density area to the extent that our resources permit. And I think that OHA will be coming out with a statement basically that recommends doing that as resources permit, and currently we do have the resources to do that. And that, that means basically continuing to do case investigation and asking contacts to stay home while the picture becomes clearer, and then households of anyone that's ill to stay in place for two weeks and ask for food, et cetera, to be delivered if at all possible. And then the only other thing is, and I, I know this may be sensitive, I understand the need to communicate with the public constituents, et cetera, and, and have camera time, but I think it would be good modeling to move, to think about moving this to something virtual, and there's pretty good flat platforms for doing that. We're actually having great success using Zoom. St. Charles used it as a vehicle for a press conference, I guess it was about a week ago.
Dr. Conway, this is Commissioner DeBonne. Right as you were saying something critical, you faded right away, so I couldn't even hear what you said just a moment ago.
I'm sorry, I'm very, very poor.
It's on the teleconference that I'm listening.
Yeah, sorry, I have very poor microphone discipline, I'll try to improve that. Anyhow, I think at, at the risk of maybe being out of turn and just offering this, I think that one recommendation that, that we're following as much as possible is going virtual for non-essential operations such as things that are not law enforcement, acute care, psychiatry, et cetera, EMS, road repairs. For things that can be done virtually, I would recommend that that, that occur. I understand that the need to communicate with citizens and constituency, but I think this, that these interactions, there should be a suitable platform that might, might provide that utility and that it might model the kind of behavior we're encouraging people to do.
Thank you very much for your comments. So, that means everyone, get your homemade mask and wear it when you're out shopping. It's their, the creativity, the ingenuity of people that are making these, they've gone way beyond, and I, I do believe that that will make the difference. If you look at the South Korea numbers today, there are 51 million people in the country, they wear gloves, they wear masks, and they've only had 162 deaths, I believe, as of today. So, they really knew what they were doing. So, that, that's the good news for the, the group.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming for, and it was great to hear from your team today.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, good.
So, Dr. Conway, is any effort being made at this point to create an independent drive-through testing facility locally that you're aware of?
There's considerable discussion, there have been movements made to develop that. There's one clinic I know that's very much poised to do it. I know that St. Charles is considering it and has signed some of the senior medical leadership to develop a plan for that, but doing it is realistic only once there's a robust supply of testing supplies, including swabs or new testing that doesn't require the, the swabs that's in short supply, as well as PPE. It's, it's critical to protect the healthcare staff and shepherd, shepherd them as well as possible to remain safe and healthy.
And then we heard from Nathan and Heather, the following people are doing testing now, St. Charles, Summit BMC, High Lakes, Rose Kenny, York Care, and the care center that's at the, at my Colorado, I think it's called Family Care or something like that. Is there any other clinic? Okay, so the Family Choice Clinic or whatever it's called, okay. And where, where it is, I didn't, is there any other clinics or facilities you think are, have done any testing or doing any?
If Heather's still on, I think you might have mentioned Copa as well.
Oh, Copa, she did, yeah. So, seven.
That would be, that would be a reasonably complete picture. However, we have to bear in mind there's, there's two clinical laboratories that are providing the testing and in this market, which are Quest and LabCorp, and any, any licensed physician could order such a test and submit it, so we, we don't, I don't have any way of inventorying them. If it became critical for some reason, I suppose we could reach out to them, but I would say that's, that's, that's the shortlist.
And as I understand it from your explanations and others, that what a test is, is a swab, a container and media, some kind of a substance to put the swab in, and then the ability to get it to a facility to, to run the lab test on the sample, is that essentially what it is?
Yes, sir, those are the requirements.
And you have to have the personal protection equipment to be able to administer the swab.
Yes.
So, that, anybody that's doing that, I assume must have those things or the availability of those things.
Yes.
Okay. Then also, any other updates on the, you mentioned in the private, previous meeting about, I forget what you call it, but kind of the, the quick test, you had a word for it, but where some, where it's a quick turnaround, simpler test maybe?
Rapid.
Rapid, yeah.
Um, no definitive word, it's, it is in development, it's one of the platforms. Abbott Laboratories has talked about it, and we're looking forward to the release hopefully soon, but we, we can't really comment on its utility, its practicality, sensitivity, all the other things that we wonder about with a laboratory test until we see, until we see the, the technical information.
One private entity is creating this kind of system or?
Oh, there's, there's many, both private and institutional, academic, et cetera, diagnostic laboratories that are working on developing platforms, and it is, it is possible if you just have the right information to use a generic PCR process and basically grow your own test. So, there's many, many people working on this. There's, I think there's a huge engine of innovation. The problem, though, is that we're, we're facing something that's multiplying on an order of maybe three to six days in the population, so every even brief interval that we don't have something at scale is another missed opportunity and probably more lives lost.
I was at a Redmond Economic Development Committee meeting this morning, or online, like you mentioned, virtual, and one of the big concerns, they represent a lot of the employers and particularly the, a lot of the manufacturing and trade sector employers in Redmond, and one of the concerns that they voiced there and has been voiced to the director that was the need for employers to be able to test their employees that they keep working because they're getting sick and should they keep that employee or whatever? So, that would be another, in encouraging more testing or whatever we can do, that was brought up.
Yes, and that, actually, that, that's a question that's, that's actually fraught too because we know that asymptomatic people are often shedding, both people that go on to have symptoms, but also people that don't have many symptoms can be shedding this. If you start testing your workforce at some cross-sectional approach, then you'd have to retest them very frequently to have any confidence in that, so.
How often would you have to retest? Because I actually had a call from a mother in Salem whose daughter works for Costco, and you know Costco has been flooded with the community. How often would you retest? If we could actually get tests in Deschutes County, would you test every week?
That's, that's a very difficult question, and there's.
I'd like an answer, yeah. I know it's a difficult question, but do we have any idea?
Well, well, so, no, really, I mean, the, the constraints are that the incubation time is five to 14 days, the best estimate of the median time is five days. So, you could, if you assume that people could be exposed right after, then maybe every few days. If you assume that people might have already been exposed, then it becomes sort of a vicious cycle of having to do it. The other problem is that if you start testing people that aren't ill and that have not been exposed, then the reliability of your, your test actually goes down if you're screening what we call a lower prevalence population, and sort of the mathematics underlying that is, is complicated, but it's, it's a well-worn and tested principle. So, so I don't know that we'd ever get to that point, but I think if we're at a point where everyone that's, so, so we're working our way down from people that are only very ill being tested and, and basically St. Charles is doing only people that are very ill and quite ill, but not necessarily requiring hospitalization, they're trying to extend down a little bit. I mention them because they're the largest entity that's, that's doing the tests and working with UW. And then the next is people that have influenza-like symptoms and fever, and we'd still like to go to the point where anyone that's symptomatic could be tested. And I think if we get to that point, which is very similar to what the, some of the East Asian nations have done, including South Korea and Taiwan, and what's. including South Korea and Taiwan, and what Singapore has done very proactively as well, I think that's enough if we do that. And then we caution folks about not passing on the virus and ask them to stay at home. I think that, that's a recipe that will allow us to be very effective in containing this, similar to say the South Korean pattern.
So kind of with regard to that, that this issue of testing, I was asked to pass on a story from, that I heard today at a meeting that someone that had gotten very sick, had the symptoms you discussed and was, her temperature was 104. They actually ended up calling EMT, got the ambulance there and they were advised, well, no, they wouldn't go to the hospital because they probably won't let you in any way. So they said to stay there and that was, so that was one of the people who was interested in testing. And that message has gotten out there, out there that, that's concerning to me that, I don't know what you're supposed to be at before you can go to the doctor or the hospital, but that was concerning that an EMT actually said that to them.
So is this individual also short of breath or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe that that's consistent with the current guidelines. And I, you know, I can't comment on a particular anecdote, but I can say that I'm not aware of any large-scale or policy-based deferral or advising deferral care for someone with that kind of presentation.
Commissioner DeBonne, did you have any questions for Dr. Conway?
No questions. Thank you very much for what you're doing and the whole health department in these challenging times.
Thanks very much. Everybody's being real troopers about this and we appreciate all of your support as well.
And let's just hope that we get our supplies because I feel like we've been talking about them forever and we desperately need them for our, our community. So thank you so much for coming today.
Thanks. Take care.
Dr. Wattenberg, would you like to just identify yourself, please, for the record? And say what you do and just thought it would be good to hear your perspective.
Almost good afternoon. It's been great. I don't come to these offices or these meetings very often. I'm Dr. Eric Wattenberg, owner and medical director at the York Care, Urgent Care Clinic in Redmond. And Patty asked me to come in today and participate. I told her I didn't know exactly what my participation would be and I try to be very consistent with all of the other guidelines and, and you know, Dr. Conway's advice and statements as well. Those are all, what we're all trying to follow. So first, do you want me to answer any questions? You've had plenty and I can give you what I've seen in the outpatient setting and.
I know, I had talked to you about drive-through and your research on drive-through was that we're better off going to a clinic or to the hospital. Did you want to address that issue?
Nationwide, drive-throughs have failed miserably. Read a few articles of municipalities that tried it and quickly it just didn't work out for a number of reasons. The biggest one being inconsistent with Dr. Conway is that most people don't need to be tested. And the reason, I think people need to understand what the testing is good for and what it picks up. The tests that we have now that everybody thinks they need are PCR-based tests. They're nasal swabs, throat swabs in the hospital with critically ill people. If they can get an expectorated, you know, sputum sample out of their deep lung, you can test that. But those tests are only good for active viral infection. They are not going to tell us what the baseline of this is. And the tests that we need dearly that we don't have yet, and you referred to Abbott Labs, there's some other manufacturers and startups and biotech companies hawking their wares. We do not have in this country in particular, access to any of those tests. There's one company that has announced as of three or four days ago, they're going to test everybody in Telluride, Colorado. And they're doing that, it's called a company called C-19, which is a subsidiary of a bigger entity in New York called United Biomedical Incorporated. And I've just read this, you know, after reading on the internet and spending 10 hours a day for the last two weeks trying to keep up with all this stuff. We do not have an antibody test that will tell you whether you've been exposed. So the, the fallacy of everybody thinking we need a bunch more tests so we can test the whole community is largely hollow because those tests, these PCR tests that we're doing right now that are being sent by St. Charles and other labs to Washington are only going to be useful if the person actually is shedding virus and in significant enough numbers to turn that test positive. There are cutoffs for what's considered positive and negative. It's not just one viral particle, it's a certain number. The tests are very sensitive. So I think people need to take a breath and realize that we could get all of these PCR tests that are being used for sick people in the world and test our community and the large, large majority of people would be negative. And that does not give you any confidence as to what your circulating numbers are. It just makes them look less significant. Even though many of those people may have already had the virus and cleared it and have gone on to continue their healthy lifestyle. Does that make sense? So that was, as I've been listening to all the other speakers here, that was one of my.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying. And thanks for coming today. I've enjoyed listening to you on the radio on numerous occasions in the last few weeks. So you're saying that, that PCR works when you're shedding? And what Dr. Conway had said is you, you may be shedding. That's, shedding means you're, you're at risk of spreading, right? That, the, the virus.
The virus is in your system, but not making you ill.
Okay, you're right. So that would be going on sometimes when you don't have symptoms. That's called asymptomatic, which it would, it would indicate it in that period. It also can go on when you're ill from it as well. So there is a big window. You're just saying it's not the whole window, right? There's, there's the part where you're not, no longer spreading the disease or have the risk of that, but you may be ill still from it. Is that, I mean, can you be ill and not shedding, as you say?
If you're ill, you're probably going to test positive.
So isn't that a? So who isn't, would be the people that, who's not shedding then?
People that are, as we know it now, people who are not ill or are not in that incubation period in the first five days. There is a lot of uncertainty. We don't know enough about this virus yet. We haven't had it long enough to study like we have the SARS virus in 2003, the first one of these. And then the MERS virus that came out in 2014.
So you're kind of, what I hear you say is you need both tests. You need an antibody test and a shedding test.
If you want to see what the background is in your real load and what your community exposure has been, how many people are walking around asymptomatic or already had this and cleared it. So we have a huge blind spot in our statistics right now nationwide. We don't know what the background of this really is. And is it going to be worse than the flu, just like the flu, less intense? The big unknown, we're getting enough data now nationwide. We know what the positive test rate is. We know what the hospitalization rates are. We know what the death numbers are. We don't know what the background of this is, so we can't compare it to anything yet. Except that we know the numbers are rising dramatically on a daily basis and it's scaring everybody and rightfully so. You know, some jurisdictions, you know, New York and Louisiana and a few other, Washington had some, you know, local outbreaks that have been very, very severe.
But, but the, the people that are concerned about becoming tested are like the individual I mentioned this morning that was sick enough that the, they called the, you know, 911. They had the ambulance come, 104 temperature was reported, breath, short of breath. But the advice was, well, if you go, you probably won't be tested. By the time it gets to a point that they qualify for current testing, that seems pretty late to me in the health business. But, so wouldn't it be better to do more of the testing than we're doing? I mean, isn't, wouldn't that still be helpful if at least that, the window opened up to those people to be able to go in more easily?
It's a loaded question and yes.
Didn't mean to load.
Obviously, any testing we do is better than none. How much we can afford to do, whether that person met all the indications to be tested for what, with what you've given us, yes. But we don't know the details, so I'm not going to pass armchair quarterback judgment on what happened in this one specific case. I can tell you, we have declined to test many people in our office who didn't meet enough criteria to raise the hackles on the back of our neck that you ought to be tested. And we've tested about a dozen people now. We've not had one come back positive yet. We will see. We have seen a few people in the last few days who have more symptoms consistent with it. But testing turnaround right now is about four days. It was a week, it was a week to eight days. I just got two tests back yesterday that were out for four days.
Where are yours going to?
St. Charles and to University of Washington.
Oh, and then it, but it's a four-day turnaround.
So if, if our turnaround is consistent with everybody else, we got two of them back yesterday that were done on the, on the 26th, so. Well, five days, depends on how you count numbers. So it's, it's not a week or 10 days now. It's, it is coming down quickly. And the numbers of tests are going up dramatically as well. So I think the system is getting better at turning these around. On that, boy, it depends on how you speak here, whether it's very loud or quiet. You voiced concern about, and it came up with the conversation, I think with Heather, that the numbers of negative tests are not accurate. And my response to that is, it's kind of so what at this point? Again, we don't know the background of this even to start with, so we don't know how to put in perspective all the negative tests except to make the positive tests look less significant. So really, right now, we're focused on who is positive, who is ill, who do we need to isolate? Who do we need to put in quarantine? So again, I wouldn't waste a lot of energy haranguing the state and University of Washington and St. Charles and everybody for those negative test numbers. Internationally and on the national scale, you look at the tallies that you can find easily on the internet and there's a column for number of cases cured or resolved. Again, who cares? You pretty much, you make the assumption, if you have a positive test and they didn't die, they recovered. So just do the math.
The reason this came up is we had had an inquiry about it from a citizen. So who cares as citizens that look at the numbers and say, gosh, how come we don't have as much testing as other places, number one? And it looked, and we've learned that it's just because, one reason we don't have as much testing is we're not able to show it all. So that was part of what, is let's at least be accurate.
We're not able to show what?
We were not showing, we, the only thing we're showing was things were reported to OHA. So if you go to our website, the front page is Deschutes County's website, it showed only the people that had, had been reported OHA as being a negative test. Well, that turned out wasn't any, as I understood it, of the St. Charles, University of Washington testing, which was the main testing place. So the positives were being reported, but not the negatives. So the, the ratio looked different in our county than other counties.
It was up at 9%.
It was 9%.
Let me, let me cut that one off.
Can I just finish? So it was at 9%. Other areas were different. So people in the public would look at that, if they looked that far and say, I wonder why it's more serious in Deschutes County or more prevalent or more, at a higher percentage. So being accurate is important in a public sense of getting information. No, we are like other places. So that was it. The other, it looked like not much was being done. Jackson County is roughly the same size as our, as our county and it had seven times as many tests recorded. So we're, we're just trying to bring the number so it's accurate because we actually are doing more than what looks like. So that's kind of a, those are the, that's who would care. Somebody that was using our website or whatever to understand, maybe not doctors and maybe not hospitals, but.
Okay, and that's understandable. The OHA, a week or 10 days ago, as soon, now it's probably two weeks now, as soon as the commercial labs started doing the testing, so St. Charles, University of Washington, is when the tests stopped being limited to just those that got sent to the Oregon Public Health Laboratory, as soon as that stopped, their website popped up and said, we can no longer give you accurate data on demographics and negative tests because these commercial labs were not getting that data to the state to put up on the state website. And how that trickled down to the county, I don't know. But that's not inconsistent with what's been going on even nationwide. It's, the pipelines, like apparently were not in place for the commercial labs to feed all of their results directly into the state, which would trickle down to the county, so.
Well, we do have a lot of very intelligent, informed citizens that follow the numbers and, you know, it is, I appreciate what you're saying, but I can understand why they would be concerned. We have a, you know, we have an affluent part of, you know, significant part of our county does a lot of traveling and the majority of our positives were from traveling. And, you know, people just, they're, you know, they're worried. And we want to, we want them to follow the rules, but please, you know, breathe fresh air and, you know, stay positive.
This is like watching your stock account right now. Don't even go look. It, it won't change a thing unless you're going to sell everything. So unless you're going to move out of the area, you know, the day-to-day numbers really don't matter much. Nobody is going to find out if their neighbor tested positive unless it happens by accident. And that's a confidentiality issue. I know you're kind of beating, you know, chewing around the edge of this. You'd like to know if it's in the nursing homes and where the tests are coming positive, are they all coming from the hospital or the community? I don't expect to ever get that information until the health departments have totally scrubbed that of anything identifiable and looked at it from a public health standpoint.
That's why I was actually, I did not mention the name. I was actually really shocked to see that on, you know, Oregon Live last night.
Well, it got out there somehow.
It got out there somehow, somebody did some investigating, but, you know.
But, you know, that's, in, in terms of public disclosure, I think, you know, from a public policy standpoint, the entire, we're asking everybody to change everything they're doing to fight a war and we're, and so they're wondering where the war is, how many people are fighting, where we're fighting it, how we're fighting it, because they're being asked to stay, to, and then they're going to be facing the economics. So it's not unusual or unreasonable that they would want to know this, just like they do in wartime and on real wars of that size. So I think that's what we're seeing. And that's why we, it's helpful when we hear about where it is. You know, the, you know, the publicity we got from the Kirkland Care Center helped focus a lot of people's minds on the risk of close contact in a medical situation. So it put us on alert. So when we heard about the Veterans Home in Lebanon, that wasn't very surprising because, but it also brings up, well, if we've had one incident in a home like that here, that's concerning, you know, that. So that, I think that's where the value really comes to people about, of some information. It helps us better know how to perform and encourages us to do the things that the, you know, we're being asked to do, so.
Well, and maybe this was really early in the situation in Oregon, but I was told that the person that was positive in Umatilla County was actually at a public event when he collapsed. The medics took him from that event, but he was waiting for his test results. So the education that we can provide to our community, I think is critical. You know, he exposed a lot of people. Fortunately, I believe they only have two positive cases in Umatilla County. But, you know, that was really unaprop, that was not appropriate behavior. And I do believe our residents need to know that, that people are making really wise decisions and, you know, we're keeping our social distancing, you know, you're not out there. And yet, and it, it is, you know, we're, we're looking at another 30 days from today to really step up and make a difference and save lives.
In the, where we are now with public policy, governors mandates, everybody's staying home, stay safe. Once we cross that threshold, that, a lot of this, while we don't have the negative numbers, doesn't really matter anymore. It doesn't change until the governor is ready to relax those restrictions and let people go out, interact and move around. The only real salient usefulness of the negative numbers is to prove that we are okay to go back out. We've got a ton of negative numbers and no positives coming in. Okay, maybe we can loosen those up. So I was, I was doing a lot of research. In fact, I did a, I put a little research paper together that really doesn't need to be, you know, addressed today, just trying to get some sort of a baseline for what does this all mean? And I can tell you, the United States is doing a lot better than the international scene in the death rate of people hospitalized with COVID. Our death rate in the United States now is around 7% of people who were hospitalized with the disease, with a positive test. Internationally, it's 18 or 19%. The flu, for whatever it's worth, the influenza, for people that are hospitalized because of influenza, the death rate's about 10%. So I intended to do all that to give us a little bit of a comfort that we're going to be okay with this. But once we crossed over to the everybody stay home, we're shutting down the economy. Nobody's supposed to get within a country mile of anybody else. Once that mandate was handed down, the utility of knowing what the background of this disease is doesn't really matter. And the negative tests. If people do want to know what, they want to know where's that one case in my neighborhood? Oh, my gosh, you know, they've got typhoid fever now and we all need to flee. That's not the case. I've taken that question on the radio and I had to kind of quiet a lady down. She had seen some official personnel, I don't know if it was the sheriff or county health department or somebody going into a house in her neighborhood wearing gloves and a mask and wanted to know why didn't, why wasn't she told what the case was? And I told her everybody in the county, every policeman, my Ben Broadman representative came out the other day to fix internet. He's wearing a mask. So if we're all going to be wearing masks now, people need to relax and realize that, you know, in the usual seasons, if the person next door to you had the flu, would you move? And the answer is no. So this doesn't appear to be any more communicable than the flu, at least as far as we know. So use the standard precautions. And this one has a lot of fear attached with it. And some jurisdictions are really having a tough time and we don't really even know the numbers there yet. And New York City has eight million people. So what does an extra 800 deaths mean? It's 800 deaths. It's very important, every person that died. But when you really look at a public health standpoint, we still don't know how to put that into perspective.
That's, that's twice the population of Oregon roughly, so.
In one city.
One city, yeah.
That was another conclusion of the paper you referred to was that density, I think, seemed to have, or you put in your own words, that.
Yeah, it's the human density in New York City. Somebody quoted in one of the articles, there is no place higher density on earth. I, I don't know if I buy that. I don't know about Hong Kong or some of the places in India, I don't know. But you have to keep in mind, New York City is so vertical that it's not just what, you know, the slums look like in some city in India. They're spread out really when you look at the landmass that they cover. So how do you, it's the only indication we have right now is the dense areas around the world are having a tough time with it.
Dr. Wittenberg, I was just, Commissioner DeBonne, did you have any questions for Dr. Wittenberg? Are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much for joining us. I don't have any questions. I just acknowledge the pool of information that we're all trying to digest and make sense of is really just concerning for kind of everybody as they go through the process of digesting this information. So thank you for what you're doing on the radio. I hear you in the mornings also at KBND. So we're all going to get you this together.
Thank you. I believe we need to take a lunch recess because our battery is going to die. Totally out of our control because it is April 1st, right?
It is, yeah.
It is April Fool's Day and our system wouldn't work this morning.
I think the biggest joke we have is the, the, oh, come on now. The Groundhog lied to us. Didn't he, early February tell us we were going to go right to spring? Well, what happened to that?
We did, didn't we? Now we've gone back to winter.
Yeah, for a few weeks there, I was lauding the Groundhog and now we all have to take that with a grain of salt too. So, you know, welcome to life.
A little trace of snow in Sisters this morning. What a, what a, what a winter-like experience, so.
Sure.
Thank you, Groundhog.
So I can give you more statistics. At this point, they're not that important. I will say COVID-19 testing for a cash pay patient with no insurance, we were told through St. Charles, it's $230. So that by itself is affecting the decisions a few people make about whether they're willing to pay that just to get the test done. So we're doing our diligence as physicians and trying to tell them what the, what the indications are and whether they really need it. And, you know, what is our gut feeling? Do we really think you have it or not?
What does it cost to get your flu, to have flu testing? Like, okay, just to eliminate all the flus?
We do a rapid test in our office. I'm going to say it's $15.
$15 for the flu?
That's a point of care test. Those are the tests we don't have out in the general public. Dr. Conway was referring to those. They are in development, but we don't have them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sharon. Are we going to shut off now? Thank you.
And we have a travel return to work policy from Eric.
Chris Bell is going to walk us through it.
Okay.
Before, is he on the Belt Line? They look like this is on. There it is. I was wondering if he could have a question before he goes.
Hello, this is Chris. I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Do you want to ask your question now?
Yeah.
Mr. Henderson has a question for you, Chris.
Okay. Chris, I had a chance to read this last night. This is the return to work after travel policy, temporary policy. And I couldn't remember what you'd said the other day, but who, whether we asked this exactly, what instigated us creating this policy? And are other counties doing this?
I'm not sure that other counties are implementing a specific policy for this. I know there's been some discussions about that, whether as a separate policy itself, or whether, whether as part of, you know, the lead policy or whatnot, or just the general COVID-19 related policy. So kind of what instigated this, I think were two things. Both the general concern about just employee travel in general, and what sort of risk got presented for employees, and then by virtue of employees for the general public who deals with the county. But also, we did have reports from within the county that there was concern of employees who had either already planned to take vacations, or because of reduced ticketing costs, and because of the bargain basically of traveling now in a lot of places, were taking, trying to take advantage, talking about taking advantage, or maybe had taken advantage of those reduced fares to travel in the situation we're in. That was probably, I think when I actually drafted this, the first draft of this policy to share with Kathleen and Eric, that was probably three weeks ago, two and a half to three weeks ago. So obviously since then, a lot has occurred and developed. But I think those were the two primary reasons for the travel policy, or the return to travel policy, is both just the general concern looking forward, but also the fact that we had had some folks report to us that the concerns getting rise to the policy had already, had either already arisen, or was soon arise.
And who had the concern?
Well, there's been concerns from the director of the 911 district, and there are concerns from, just I think talking with HR director and with Eric, excuse me, the deputy county administrator about the issue. The individual concern primarily came from 911.
Okay, oh yeah, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go through it now?
No. Just, I'll answer any questions. In thinking about the policy, especially after our meeting last week, I do have two issues that I took note of, as far as just consideration from the board for maybe just some slight language changes. The first one is under, it's the page one of the policy, the first definition is covered travel. And this definition was subject to some revision, even up until Monday, when this was first presented to you. And it currently covers both travel to locations with widespread or ongoing community spread of COVID-19, or to any location via what we term crowded modes of transportation. At this point, I do have some concerns, you know, just given the spread, and then it seems like there's ongoing community spread everywhere, that this is broader than originally intended. Because really, I think what this is really trying to get after is those people who choose to travel via a crowded mode of transportation, really anywhere, because that's, I guess, a flashpoint for infection, in our view, is getting on an airplane, going to an airport, getting anywhere where you're clustered closely with a bunch of people, and you can't avoid that. And so in rethinking this, and especially given how the pandemic has developed, I think we can get most of the way we wanted to go, get to, if we maybe just change the language to include travel to any location via crowded modes of transportation. Because originally, this was kind of geared toward the CDC's recommendations. They had the level three locations, like China, Iran, you know, other places, that they basically said, don't go there. And then they had level two places, which I think really included kind of the original definition, tried to encaps, or capture those places. But now it just seems like, you know, it's a global pandemic, it's everywhere in the United States now, and so it's almost like, to me, that term may have been rendered meaningless. That's just my opinion. I don't think, I don't think leaving the definition as is is terrible, but I think it might be a little more broad than needed. And so that's why I would recommend that change to the language.
Are there some word changes then, or what?
What are you recommending?
Yeah, yeah. So it would be, travel covered by this temporary policy includes travel to any location via crowded modes of transportation, period. So we would take out includes travel to locations with widespread or ongoing community spread of COVID-19, that first clock before the oar. And again, that's just based on, you know, the current reflection of reality that really, pretty much everywhere in the United States, everywhere else, has widespread or ongoing community spread of COVID-19. And by doing that, again, I think we can capture most of the types of travel that we were really concerned with. So if somebody, again, like I mentioned Monday, if somebody wants to drive to Redmond, you know, for work, or to visit a relative that they know doesn't have COVID-19, or wants to drive to even Seattle in their own personal vehicle, that seems to be of a substantially lower risk than hopping on a bus, or a train, or a plane to get there.
Well, I guess I thought that, I mean, I would cover that more with a... I actually thought that was the stronger part of the provision, was going to places where has widespread risk. Like, for instance, if we went to Harney County, there's no, there haven't been any cases there yet, so is that a, is that a risk? I mean, but I thought there were places that were still widespread or community spread that are different. Are you saying that whole definition's gone away? Of more risky areas? I mean, I think of risky areas as the ones we hear about every, all the time.
Yeah, I agree with you. And again, I think if you, as you, Commissioner Henderson and the commission is comfortable with the broader definition, I think, you know, I think that would be fine. I just think as this develops, certainly Harney County and things, and areas of that, like that, don't have the real widespread concerns that we have, even in Deschutes County. And certainly, Deschutes County is not as, they could say, King County, Seattle, New York. But I just, I was concerned of, you know, trying to keep the definition a little bit flexible. But I also, I get it, I get what you're saying. And that's kind of what drove the original definition. It's, I was just trying to find a balance there. And perhaps, you know, because we can review this policy really as frequently as needed, you know, I could see why you might want to keep it as is. And then maybe if we determine it's too broad in the future, because basically now everywhere is subject to widespread community spread, then we can change it then.
Okay.
See, I, but you're, I guess we're looking at the definitions down below, but up above is the way I took you to mean it. And the purpose exists where they choose to travel to countries with widespread or community spread. So in other words, we might go to, I don't know where that isn't a widespread. I thought the issue was really when you travel somewhere where it's a risk, and then I thought within the U.S. So I don't know how you characterize those, because can I travel to country A that has had very little of this? Is that, I was always picturing this, and I guess I'm wrong, as just not going northern Italy, not going to China, not going to Iran, you know, but I don't know if that meant I couldn't go to England. I don't know. I guess if...
I don't think you're wrong, Commissioner. I think, again, when that purpose statement was originally drafted, it was two and a half, three weeks ago, when the situation seemed to be a lot more isolated to those countries. And it certainly... And it certainly, you know, it's kind of blossomed throughout Europe. It's, um, it's blossomed throughout the Middle East. It's blossoming in Africa, and it's certainly blossoming within the United States and Canada, and now it's even blossoming in Mexico. And so, uh, that's why I brought this up. It's just, it's constantly evolving, and it, and it doesn't seem like, uh, the areas of ongoing or widespread community spread are shrinking or going away. And it, in, in reverse, it seems like those places are just becoming the common, um, reality. And so, you know, we could, uh, at least identify at this point, you know, those sort of level three countries that were, that actually were originally part of the original definition, and we could parse those out. Look, if you go here regardless of any mode of transportation, you're going to be subject to this policy. But again, those countries, you would have to take a crowded mode of transportation, like an airplane or a cruise ship, to get to. And so I think, again, um, by and large, that, um, that, uh, concern is, is taken care of in that, that language with regard to how you travel, not necessarily where you travel.
Chris, I'll jump in. I think the most, I mean, one approach is the level three, uh, areas or countries identified by the CDC. Currently, that's listed as China, Iran, most European countries, United Kingdom, and Ireland. Then there's also some advisories, travel advisories. And for the travel in the United States, the CDC, it says, "Issues domestic travel advisory for New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut." It specifically identified those three states as a, uh, travel advisory, where it's warning people not to travel. But that's a different level than that level three warning in those countries that I listed before.
But it doesn't have, um, New Orleans on there, for instance, or?
Or King County is the problem.
King County, or Chicago, isn't it?
Not yet.
No.
And again, I think Commissioners, that, that highlights the, the, the issue is, who's to say tomorrow those towns, those cities, those counties aren't going to be on that list? And, and that's kind of why, I wanted to see if we could maybe, uh, my thinking was to try to add some flexibility to it, so we're not constantly having to add new places. Perhaps we can just put some sort of general language on there, specifically identifying those places the CDC, uh, either has identified, or, um, in the future identifies as locations with widespread or ongoing community spread.
So that, yeah. So the, the, the goal of this policy really is to cause people that go in this, um, crowded mode of transportation or covered areas right now, they have to self-isolate for 14 days, which means basically you can't necessarily work unless you're able to do remote work, which is, um, is that right? I mean, that's really the, so it's, it could kind of be seen as a, really discouraging anybody from doing it, or, uh, some people might even see as punishing you for going somewhere, right? I mean, that's-
Yeah, I, I think people can't, can't take it that way. I can tell you that the purpose of this was not to be punitive. The purpose of this, again, is to protect coworkers who don't, uh, take, you know, your, um, types of travel. You know, it's, it's, and, and really then to protect people in the public who interact with county staff. Um, it's not saying you can't go, but it is saying if you do go, um, you're going to be subject to self-isolation just because that's an identified risk. Um, so, I mean, if people interpret it as punishment, I, I get that. Um, it's not what was intended.
Well, let's, can we talk a little bit about the modes of transportation? Because what I read this saying is basically if you take a train, Airbus, rail, or your ship, or if you hit the terminal, so, does this include local buses? The Cascades East Transportation?
I think if it's got 10 or more people in it, then, then yeah. Because I, I think CDC guidelines right now, um, are that if you take, um, that if you're anywhere enclosed with, uh, 10 or more people, you've heightened the risk. That said, I get it. I mean, I, I suppose, again, we are thinking of, um, less local modes of travel, so we could specifically exclude that. Because I, I think, uh, an, an issue that I'm sensitive to is that there are people who don't have an option but to use public transport to the extent that public transport is still available. And so, you know, I, I actually, if, if your point was going there, I agree with that point. And that's something that, um, could be, you know, sort of, um, excluded from the definition as local public transit. Um, if, if, if the Commissioners should be more comfortable with that. Because I, I have personal-
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't know that anybody that work, you know, I don't know how many people that work at the county. This only applies to county peoples. I don't know how many people use it, but I, so what you're saying, it would if there's 10 people on the bus, but if there's only nine, it would be all right? The way it's written.
That counts the driver.
Yeah.
So?
Yeah. It's, it's kind of an arbitrary number, but it is based on, um, some CDC data that I think it's, it's really a numbers game at this point. Uh, but yeah, it's an arbitrary number. We had, you know, you had to draw the line somewhere, because then you start getting into people's personal modes of transportation in a car, if they have a minivan and they have six people. Is that, is that a danger? Possibly, um-
Yeah, minivan with six might be more dangerous than a bus with 10. I mean-
Yeah.
That's been, one of the issues that's been raised on the overnight rentals is that they pack a bunch of people in an overnight rental house, and so, whereas if it's just a couple renting a house, it's not as much, you know, exposure risk, so, I don't know.
Right.
I guess I'm concerned about adopting a policy like this that just basically prevents any air flights. Rail, I mean, rail, is it 10 per train or 10 per car? I mean, I don't know if anybody does this. Air is the one that people still might do, and, you know-
And the numbers are down, what, 93%?
So the plane might have less than 10.
Right.
But you won't know before you make the, you won't know before you make the res, show up at the airplane.
I know. Well, what if you have a death in the middle? You have to fly there.
I think most people aren't going to travel. Yes, I mean, most farm employees, I think, are not going to choose to travel right now, or at least travel, uh, an extended distance unless they absolutely have to. And, um, you know, it, and I, I think that, as we talked about Monday, some of, some people, perhaps even most, will be covered by, uh, sick, um, sections for, for paid sick leave, um, if, you know, they qualify under, under that leave. I, you know, I, I just think that, um, we, we had to, in our opinion, as a risk management maneuver, and a, and a, and as a way to protect our employees who don't choose to travel in this way, uh, and also the general public, we just had to make some choices, and, uh, this is kind of what we came up with.
So I'm curious, did we have those employees that were going to go on their trip to, I think it was Belize or something?
That was one example.
Belize?
Did they go?
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, because I know if you go to Hawaii, it's two weeks quarantine.
And then you get back, it's two more weeks.
It's good. So it's like, well-
If you want to read books.
Yes.
So, um, as Chris said, this policy was drafted, um, some weeks ago. So, uh, since then, the governor has issued a stay-at-home, uh, order-
Yes.
-of the state. So, um, if this was travel associated, you know, with something other than essential work-related travel, um, it would essentially be a violation of the stay-at-home order. So I don't know if, uh, adopting a policy implies some kind of tacit permission to travel, uh, with these kinds of conditions or not. But it is, uh, you know, a, a new wrinkle that wasn't in place when this policy was drafted.
So you're saying with the governor's order, that we need to stay at home? That people shouldn't even be taking a vacation? Maybe shouldn't even be considering a vacation?
Well, I'm not saying whether they should or shouldn't, only that you could certainly argue that taking, traveling under this is in violation of the state order.
Okay.
Where's, I'd be interested to hear where Commissioner DeBon is. I kind of know where I am on it, I think.
You what?
I kind of know where I am before we get into details.
Commissioner DeBon?
Well, having the conversation is good. Um, I'm not strongly motivated to pass this like it's going to, you know, uh, be the, the biggest thing that we need to do. Uh, it is a conversation and a expectation of our employees and, you know, the wonderful people that work for the county, not to take advantage of a situation, book a trip, then, on short notice, and then be in this two-week hold. So, I mean, that's kind of the intention of this, is not having a shutdown of a, you know, a shift or two, especially if it's a 911 by people leaving town. So, um, yeah, as I say, and with the new information we just had, we could go either way with this. Either put it on the books. Uh, I guess it would be kind of Chris and Eric and Kathleen's guidance if it really needs to be there right now. Um, yeah, leave it at that.
I, I agree. Eric, what is your analysis? I mean, do we still have that 911 situation?
I don't know the answer, whether or not the employee went to Belize, if that's, is that your question?
Yes, I mean, I didn't know where that employee was, but, um, I, I would think by now all 1,000 county employees would know that you really aren't supposed to be traveling unless there are incredibly extenuating circumstances.
Yes, and as, as you mentioned earlier, going to Hawaii results in, in the quarantine nat, I mean, not by us, but by, uh, the state.
Right. So, even though you only have to pay $5 to go there, it's going to, it's not going to be a very happy vacation, so, yeah.
Well, not, so 10% of people are traveling, according, if it's a 90% reduction of people.
7%. I think he said 93%.
93, so 7% of people, which, at our airport, is 70,000 people would fly in a year. Because we, or, well, the employments were about a million, so, um, I wonder... Yeah, I guess I, I'm not inclined to, to try to carve this out right now unless it becomes a... I do, I am concerned with people willingly exposing others, like employees, I mean, to, to COVID-19, and I am, um... I don't know what, yeah, so I guess I'm not inclined to really adopt it yet unless we see a problem continuing. It seems like maybe that was a spring break thing. I, I don't know. I guess that's why I asked what the instigation of this was, and whether other counties are doing it.
Yeah.
Because counties have, or some of the counties are quite a bit bigger than us, are they doing it? What were you going to say, Commissioner DeBon?
So this, this is our, you know, our public board meeting. We're, we're learning about it, thinking about it. Uh, I don't see that we need to move for approval right now. I, I support that. And, uh, you know, I'm available for conversations from management, and, you know, anybody that works for the county too, that, you know, if we're in a tight spot and somebody's abusing the situation, let's have that conversation.
Okay. It sounds like we're in agreement that we can postpone making a decision at this time unless we hear that things are changing out there. But I believe currently with the governor's ruling, most people have to recognize the fact that it's, it's just not the appropriate time to take any kind of a vacation like that. Sharon, did we, can we get Dr. Fawcett on the line now? If he's available?
All right, well, thank you, Board. We will-
Thank you.
Hold on to it, and if, if circumstances change, uh, we can, uh, bring it back for consideration.
I know, hopefully, yes. I did want to announce that one of our, um, residents has sponsored the Dom Diddy Classic for the last so many years in memory of his son, who passed from cancer. And, um, it's a June golf tournament, and I just received the notice that it will, um, cancel this year, it'll be postponed till 2021. So, uh, want to thank them for reaching out and, um, really making the public aware of, um, young people getting a cancer that they shouldn't get and they shouldn't die from. So, anyway, yes, next year will be the Dom Diddy.
Uh, I've got something too while we're waiting for Dr. Fawcett. I was at the Redmond Economic Development Board meeting tonight, today, and I've got, following up with that, I talked with Bruce Barrett from our, um, Budget Committee, who is very involved in SCORE, Central Oregon, um, what is it called? Um, Small, you know, it's Retired Executives. It's something core of retired executives. So it's people that give advice on business. He gave me some, uh, notes of other connections. Uh, Tom Schnell is the head of Business Oregon locally. SCORE, Central Oregon's contact. John Stark from Ready, and the Small Business Development Center at COCC. And I've got some phone numbers for those, and we could put them maybe on our webpage as a, just, these are people that would help people figure out what to do about their businesses. Um, some of these are also going to be, I think, getting more information on the Small Business Administration Loan Program, and how that's going to work. But they're also talking about taxes. We had a pretty good discussion about that today. Then also, Redmond Chamber has a good website for small businesses and business people to look at, to figure out some of the things that they need to do. So I'll get these to Whitney and put them on the-
Oh, good.
Um, our, our website.
And don't forget Central Oregon SOS, that website.
Is from the Ben Chamber?
That's the Ben Chamber, and everything funnels, all the chambers are funneling their information to that one website, which is really nice for people. Um, and the fact that it does say SOS on it seems to be, um, appro, um, improving, and you don't get the Secretary of State's office here.
Good.
That's the really good news, they worked out that little kink. He's seeing patients right now. Okay, all right, so we'll get, we'll hopefully get to talk to Dr. Richard Fawcett later this afternoon. Um, the good news is he's seeing patients, and he is part of our public health team. So, thank you, Dr. Fawcett. Um, we now have on our agenda the vacation rental discussion. Tom and Dave?
Well, Commissioners, a couple of things. Uh, Dave did provide to you a draft, um, advisory order that we can certainly review, but one of the other things that the Board had, uh, asked about on, uh, Monday was, um, getting some feedback from the Central Oregon Visitors Association and, um, the major stakeholders, destination resorts that are part of that organization. There was a board meeting yesterday that I know Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner DeBon uh, listened in on, and I was part of as well. So, uh, I think the Commissioners can certainly give sort of their take, and I'm happy to add anything that I can.
Okay.
Sure, I'll take, yeah, I'll take it for a moment. Uh, so there was the Central Oregon Visitors Association, COVA, board meeting. Uh, this is attended by, uh, the board members, who was our management from Tetherow and Pronghorn and Sun River, um, Vacasa, which is, uh, you know, rental, home rentals, or, uh, short-term rentals. So a lot of the players in the industry. So that's the Board of Central Oregon Visitors Association. I was able to bring up the topic of the request to shut down short-term rentals. There was a good discussion yesterday. Uh, some of the folks, uh, you know, mentioned that there's some real positive things happening down that path. So I'm going to talk about the positive things first here for a moment. The fact that there's, uh, very much a disconnected physical transaction, you know, uh, uh, reservations are made online, keyless entry, uh, properties are, are being cleaned between, uh, the stays. So there, you know, there's a path that works down that, uh, that area. Also, some of the folks that have, uh, you know, are coming in right now. So there's some scenarios where, uh, doctors or nurses are coming from other areas for a few days. So there's some scenarios where people are needing these short-term rentals. Um, you know, so there, there are opportunities down that. Uh, there's also, well, yeah, so that was the COVA board meeting. The, uh, the property operators, they know, you know, they're talking about the golf courses that are, uh, are starting to be open for members only, like for the, the folks associated with the golf course, not the general public. Uh, uh, some of the rentals, Caldera Springs, Sun River area, uh, people- rentals, Caldera Springs, Sun River area, people are coming to that conclusion, which we've heard in our public comments. You know, there's a new set of people next door, and I thought, you know, we're trying to shelter a place. What does that mean? They're the ones on the path. They're the ones going to the stores. You know, what about social distancing? So, you know, each one of these operators have had those conversations with folks also. So, that's the starting point.
Okay. Was Eagle Crest represented?
No.
No, Eagle Crest.
Eagle Crest doesn't have anybody on the, yep, not.
They're not on the board.
Okay, they're not on the board.
So, did you want to add some points about Tom?
Yeah, no, I thought Tony covered it well. The only thing I'd add is that a couple of them did note that, well, they confirmed the numbers that we were speaking of on Monday in terms of the extremely steep drop in rentals that they do have these days, on the order of 90%, as was mentioned. But they said many of the people that they are renting to aren't necessarily vacationers, but, you know, could be first responders, doctors that are coming to be part of the response. They also noted that many people are, the owners of these homes are, are coming here to stay or to ride out the pandemic. So, they may not even be visitors. They may be, in fact, the owners of the home.
So, I listened in just, it's kind of my own personal research on the issue. I really thought it was a great meeting to hear, you know, the developer or the, you know, from Tethro, from Pronghorn, some of the ones that I, we hadn't heard from recently. And I was, before that, I had contacted two of the, what were the top managers at Sun River to talk about why they'd made their shutdown and what, what they thought about this, et cetera. And then the other thing, there was the news article on the TV a couple nights ago about, you know, some of the people that have complained in Eagle Crest. Couple of things, opposites I have. One is, is that different resorts, it's a bigger, I think, different, bigger problem than other resorts. And I think particularly Eagle Crest and Sun River probably have a more diverse rental population than, say, Tethro and Pronghorn do. So, maybe more concerns there. But they also have, I think, more long-term residents historically at those two resorts now. So, that's one of the things why we're getting more feedback there. But I think it's, I've come to the conclusion that despite the cost of some of the owner, unit owners and people that maybe do this to help pay their mortgage or just to make money or whatever, I, I've come to the conclusion, I'd like, I'm in favor of prohibiting overnight rentals, except for the important exceptions like healthcare or employment, long-term employment or whatever. I, I don't want to do just the encouraging, you know, strongly encourage wording. I think, I don't know, that's after the real, after I've talked to a variety of people and heard their positions, that's where I am.
I, after talking to many owners, was anyone from Black Butte at that, are they on that board, Black Butte?
Yeah, Jay Head is on the board. I don't recall if he was able to participate yesterday.
Yeah, nobody spoke from Black Butte.
Nobody spoke from Black Butte. Well, I know.
Yeah, he was not in attendance.
No one. Okay. I do know that a lot of owners have moved back to their homes in Black Butte. So, but I, you know, I've heard from numerous people from different parts of our county that have been highly impacted by these short-term rentals in their community, especially when people just come in for the weekend. They don't have the same feeling that we do of protecting our neighbors. They're just here to have a good time, and then they're going to leave. And I really feel like we do need to prohibit short-term in those areas that are making it difficult for the people that live here to maintain their social distancing, stay healthy. It's, it is really, it's important. I don't know. People that come in here otherwise, you're, do you think that making them quarantine, okay, let's say we have, the owner comes back, they live in Portland, but they come over to live in their house. Do they need to quarantine themselves for a while and before they get out in our community? Or are they just automatically out in our community? I mean, that's just, that's a question to you, too.
Well, I personally think if someone owns a house here and wants to stay in it, they have, they have the right to do it. I, I think they're coming here, a lot of them, for the same safety reasons that the neighbors, they're worried about the overnight rental or are complaining to us about. So, they would be probably as conscientious as the, in general, as the, as the person that lives here full-time. I mean, they're, that'd be my guess, that that's what's leading people to move here. So, I'm not inclined to have a quarantine of a resident or, you know, of an owner personally. So.
Okay. I mean, I was just.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Mr. DeBonne, did you have any different feeling on that?
Yeah, I don't know that that's, that I'm willing to go there at this point. You know, maybe that's a, you know, a governor's office-type statement also. I don't know that we're in a spot that we would want to be doing that.
Well, I do believe that we need to prohibit short-term rentals. I just think that it's, it's just not appropriate right now. It could be an economic hit, but, you know, I think everyone has felt an economic hit from this pandemic, and hopefully we can make it as short-term as possible. But I, I feel like our community deserves peace and.
There's a proposed board order that we have some words around this, and it just gets down to five, six items at the very bottom of it, if you're looking at the papers. I'm looking at it on my computer here.
I came up with a few.
This order does not.
Yeah, but.
Well, I'm proposing 14 days. Remember, that's that number that kind of popped in, the deducing from what we talked before, that 14 days is that, is that period of time if somebody needs to quarantine, you know, this, you know, somebody could utilize a facility just to settle in for two weeks, opposed to 30 days.
Okay.
And that, then I have some other things, too. There was some pushback, though, at the meeting from some of the resorts about that not being the right number. I can't remember what they said.
Yeah. Well, the three, the scenario is a doctor that coming here for three days at a time, you know, or nursing staff or any emergency staff. So, there could be scenarios where we want to do that. I think the order might have some kind of disclaimer words in here, or if it doesn't, we could have it for, except for absolutely necessary for health, safety, employment, and consistent with executive orders of the governor, is item number two there. So, I think that works for some of the scenarios that were mentioned. The lodging operators yesterday definitely were not in favor of this. So, I mean, this is going different direction than, than, you know, was discussed at the board meeting yesterday. But this is the reality. Sounds like the, you know, majority of the board's going that way. I've been very much on the fence, trying to figure out, really, it's those three-day rentals that I think that might really upset some people. You know, the fact they're coming in on Thursday night or something, have a Friday, Saturday, and leave Sunday afternoon. That is a vacation-type three-day weekend. It's just awkward at this time. So, I mean, I could even get to a point of seven days as minimum stay.
Yeah, I would, I had gone the other way. I'd gone to 21 days, but I don't know if there's a magic change between three. And I wouldn't go as low as seven. I do think that in.
And this is not a fully vetted, this process isn't fully vetted. I'd like to acknowledge that. You know, we're talking about, you know, enforcement, because there's discussions from Eagle Crest. Folks, I heard, I think one person mentioned, will let us do it at the homeowners association, or would it be a sheriff's office, remember, we talked about, or could it be a land use for code enforcement? I mean, this is, no matter what we do, it's going to be the fine balance of enforcement, community education, and respect of neighbors.
Well, I had some changes. So, I'll, kind of along that issue of enforcement, I was thinking of changing the last whereas on that same page to read, whereas if nonessential travel and lodging persists or increases, the county may establish enforcement by further order imposing penalties for allowing nonessential short-term lodging within the county, including, including cease and desist and financial penalties for violation. So, not putting that in today, but making the prohibition and then, because I'm, I don't know whether it's a really better enforcement through law enforcement or through code enforcement. And it's a short-term request, but I know that, I think both would be reasonable in some ways. So.
We were explained, too, on Monday, that code enforcement is a little slower and that this is something that the neighborhood would want to be addressed easier?
Well, he did say that, but I was actually thinking not so much that the code, you know, the resolution in a courtroom would be the key to it. It'd be the fact that a homeowner in Eagle Crest gets a code enforcement complaint, and they're, you know, they're, they, as a renter of property, they may say, well, I'm not going to do that anymore. It might be very effective, rather than the people that are there getting the criminal type of complaint. So, that's why I didn't really know. I thought we had to work through the enforcement. I was, since we only meet irregularly, I was thinking, well, maybe could, today we could, what if we just passed the prohibition today with some, I've got a few small wording changes, but some of the main ones were that, what day it starts, how long it is in effect, you know, and then a few were other, we can actually get to an order today if we wanted to, rather than wait until Monday for our next meeting or something. So, that's all.
I know. I think, I would hope we could actually do something today, because we did talk about it on Monday. And having it.
Well, and I really like, sorry.
Well, the fact that we'll remain in effect till April 28th seems appropriate. That matches what we're looking at.
I would go longer than that, actually. I'd go probably in May sometime.
Oh, like to match Sun River, you mean?
Well, they're one of the big, they're one of the big affected parties. I think there's a somewhere on there, 15th is a Friday. The next Friday, the 22nd is, the 22nd is when, is the Friday before Memorial Day. If we reopen by them, that's a possibility.
Do you have the access to what day Sun Rivers will, I know it started on St. Patrick's Day. I thought it was 60 days from there. So, I was thinking it was like the 15th.
I had, in my head, it's somewhere near that, maybe the 18th, but I don't know.
I'm looking up right now.
Thank you.
So, what do you think about that strategy, Commissioner DeBonne, about maybe putting the whereas, putting the penalties in a whereas for today while we figure out how it actually could work?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my point. I like that idea, because then this lays out the whole, you know, scope with all the whereas. It concludes with, you know, if, if this isn't adhered to or if this, if it's still a problem, it could, it could be escalated. I like that.
Commissioners, this is Dave. A few questions for clarity.
Yes.
Will this be effective only in the unincorporated county? Will it affect the cities? Will it affect hotels, motels, RV parks? Or, and is it going to be the 30 days, 14, 21, 7?
Well, we'll need to take them one by one. The, I would vote probably for the unincorporated areas, because I know the city of Bend has done, kind of has, I mean, we don't really control their, well, typically don't control their resi, I don't know if residential or their overnight stays here. We don't have anything to do with their policies for them. What were you thinking?
I really didn't have a position on that. I do know in Lincoln County, they had buy-in from all the cities in the county. So, the emergency order Lincoln County put in effect covered the entire county, both unincorporated and cities. But, but they made a point to note that they had 100% buy-in from all the cities.
I don't think we've done any checking. All I did was check with resorts and people that are really in our properties, not, has anybody else talked to Sisters or Lapine or Redmond?
No, everyone seems to be.
Nope.
Doing what they're doing. And we're hearing.
So, I support rural, rural only.
Yes, I would say the unincorporated areas.
Okay, great. And it's, are we going to distinguish hotels, motels, RV parks, or are they going to be included along with apartments and single-family homes?
Well, RV parks are, yeah, we haven't done much research on RV parks or.
I, I got opinions. So, as of today, we've got the dynamics at specific properties, Eagle Crest and some of the homes around the Sun River area. So, remember, Sun River's kind of a loaded term, because there's the name of the resort, the area, the greater area. So, I would not support taking it out any farther. I mean, this is going to be a big public statement itself. So, really, it is the developed multiple house rental market that we're talking about.
So, would it be perhaps within the Sun River unincorporated community, have applicability to apartments and single-family homes, as well as the Eagle Crest Destination Resort, the Pronghorn Destination Resort, and the Tethro Destination Resort?
Well, there's a lot of.
Want to start naming them? I don't know, but I want to go there.
I would, I would.
Well, you also have Black Butte Ranch, and you would have the Inn at Seventh Mountain as well.
Well, there are a lot of rentals outside the Sun River Incorporated area that are part of this group. I mean, they're, people are the same people as well.
Black Butte Ranch, those homes are, they're usually pretty, pretty well spread out in most, in most cases, you know, driving around in there.
A number of your emails were from Black Butte residents.
What?
A number of your emails were from Black Butte residents.
No, they were from Eagle Crest.
There was, there's some from Black Butte as well.
Well, I know that my pharmacist in Sisters said she's seen, you know, a ton of people from Portland that have moved back in town. So.
There probably were, I mean, I, I didn't get to them. I, and, so, we're, you've got the words motels and hotels.
So, when you say permitted essential travel, we're talking about medical staff? Or that type of, that's what that's referring to?
Well, there were three categories. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the governor's order 20-12 identifies in one of the sections, speaking to travel, what is deemed as appropriate travel. I don't, you know, if we're asking that, we could, we could work off of that.
Don't we have, in one of the other counties, or somewhere I read it, there's ones that identify people working in healthcare, people in, you know, taking care of people, maybe, related to.
Family members.
Family members or something. People, employment over the number of days, you know, we choose. There was actually categories like that. We have a more broad definition here of, you know, necessary for health, safety, or employment. It seems like we could spell out those things that people would feel more comfortable that we'd take in it under consideration of people that more than just leave it ambiguous, and then we have to define it for them. We could define it now. There were several in one of the proposals you gave us.
That laundry list is in the Lincoln County order that you folks have.
So, what about using something like that?
That's the board's direction. Absolutely. We'll, we'll draft something up. If that's the board's direction, absolutely. We'll draft something up.
What do you think?
I think that's fine. I just, Lincoln County covered the whole county, and we're just covering unincorporated. I mean, that seems to be what the three of us were supporting. And what day can we make this effective?
Tomorrow.
That's a good question. I mean, we need to get something drafted up and prepared, and there needs to be an opportunity for some level of notification to other people.
I like the word effective immediately when we sign it. I mean, that's, that looks good. Do we have it?
Yes.
Yeah, that was drafted with the advisory. That wasn't the one prohibiting anything. I'm trying to look here real quickly as we read, but the Lincoln County one was in effect upon signature. Again, they vetted it with their city, with all the cities, and so I believe there was a little more debate on that before they actually signed the order.
So as we're going forward, Dave, I have a couple of suggestions at the front of the deal. We can, we're thinking about it. It starts out in order to protect health and safety, the hospitals, medic slash medical system. And I would put, and citizens of Deschutes County, because really, it's not just the system we're protecting, it's the people. So, and then change the word discouraging to prohibiting. And then in your whereas is like, I like both for B O C C and W H O, maybe put the names of them in there, as well as the abbreviation if you want, but some people don't necessarily know what those are.
Please add names. It really helps make it much clearer for the public.
And then I wondered, your whereas that has Nathan in it, what if we had a larger one that was, or a larger group that, I had whereas numerous emergency managers, medical providers, and health experts had noted that the local hospitals, emergency responders, supply of masks, comma, critical care equipment, CCUs, and ventilators are in dangerous, and it kind of a broader definition of what's in, it's not just masks and equipment, it's also the CCU beds and the ventilators is really the, so a bigger group describing it, maybe that wording. Do you see where I am?
The first paragraph on page three or four, or the-
It's the first whereas on page three, or I guess it's, it's page three of a, it's actually the second page on the order, but, yeah. I can get with you to show you, I'm just laying that out. Are you with me?
I see the, I see what you're identifying. We could certainly add ventilators, ICU beds.
But something more than just Nathan, because it's really, it was quite a few people have recommended, you know, all that. So that's why, and they're not, they're not magic words, but just a broader group than just one person. Then on, Dr. Conway's goes on quite a ways. There's one sentence we could take out, the one that starts, while we cannot stop the cases, because it's kind of redundant. I mean, the first sentence isn't, and the last sentence is good. And then the one about county tur, what's that?
Like I said, that was a quote from Dr. George, but-
Well, you could put some more dots. Some more dots. Yeah. On the tourism paragraph, it, I would say including visit Central Oregon. And then take out the visit ban in the tourism industry, and just put word and there. Communicate early that is not, now is not the time to visit and lodge in Deschutes County.
Right. That's what we were saying.
Or anywhere that, can't read what I wrote, therein, the, or maybe in the cities incorporated therein or something, but in Deschutes County, but it's, and it's, visits Central Oregon is actually our agency now, I think, is the name they go by. So that's COVA.
Right. And I wasn't aware of what they may have said.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's why I'm updating it, is they did basically say that. They've been responsive to the crisis and communicated early, there's now time not to visit. They pretty much agreed with that, so.
They sent out that message, like, what, two weeks ago? Not two?
Well, that was visit ban, but.
No, I thought it was from, um.
Oh, they did. You're right. Yeah, you're right. They did. So, yeah, that's right. So it was visit Central Oregon. That's right. It was the city of Bend, yeah.
So how much of the time is, it's short-term rentals, 30 days or less, 14, 7?
What do you think about the 14? I'm, I know that people don't-
14.
7 is too little.
Do you think 14 is okay? Other, there's people who wanted us to do 30, because they think of that as, I guess at 30, it's no longer an overnight stay, period. It becomes a rental agreement. What's your idea, Commissioner DeBonne, that you think that if they're staying more than 14 days, they're not a bunch of disrespecting social close people?
Oh, yeah. It's, yeah, just, it's that two-week period. It's just kind of the, you know, the point where you're settling in for a reason. It's not a, and if somebody, you know, I mean, if somebody could be taken a two-week vacation or a short-term vacation and paid for 14 days, so there's different scenarios there. But 14 seems to be the number that just is, would be a decision point, a big decision point.
I mean, some people would rent it for 14, but really only come here for four. And are they going to act like they're here for four and not really be, recognize their responsibility to the community? I, I mean, I can definitely see that.
Yeah, one or more of the resorts wanted it to be 30, so I don't know exactly why.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with 30. I mean, this is really a very unusual Supreme stance. And you have to remember, the most vulnerable are those people that are 60 and above. And, you know, those are a lot of our residents in Deschutes County that are worried about where they shop and who they keep meeting, and they want to, you know, reduce, reduce the herd that they're dealing with.
Okay. Well, I was-
I support 14, but if, yeah, it's up to you, you know, we'll just figure out where we're going to go with it.
We need to, okay, are you 14 then, or we need to make a decision, do we not?
Well, yeah, I was at 30, unless I can be convinced to go to 14.
No, I'm-
And you're at 30. I, I'm all right with 30, frankly, but I don't, I think you're an overnight rental until you get to 30, because you can't really get, unless you're at 30, you're not a longer term, I mean, it's a legal thing.
Okay.
Commissioners, this is Nick LeLac. Can I just offer one quick perspective?
Yes, you may. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, as, I think you're gravitating towards the 30-day, and that really is the industry standard. Having served on short-term rental committees and whatnot, 30 days really is, is kind of the benchmark standard. I think you can go below, as Dave was mentioning, and Commissioner DeBonne is indicating a potential interest in, but I just wanted to share that that's the industry standard.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Dave, two of us are saying 30.
Okay, great. We can have that reflect 30 days. Have, have you decided whether it's going to include all hotels, motels, RV parks, apartments, single-family homes, any type of dwelling units that are short-term, meaning 30 days or less, within the rural unincorporated county?
I support the rural and probably removing RV parks. This just isn't RV season, and if that comes up, we can add that to this.
So are, you're looking at item three, right, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct. We've indicated there, and this was, you know, pulling over language from other orders we found. Hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfasts, RV parks, temporary lodgings.
So we've already taken out short-term rentals?
We did?
Well, I meant, if we're talking, they have to rent for 30 days?
Well, it's-
Does that put them in that category?
Well, that's the name of a building, is a short-term rental. It's a, it's a different, yeah. I think it's just describing a place, like a house.
Okay. Are there hotels?
Yeah, Tethro is, and Pronghorn's a hotel, too, and.
All the destination resorts, there's one in between here and Redmond. There's some other.
Well, I think the people in hotels understand that they have, they're checking in. They have, it's a different situation when you're checking into a hotel, whereas if you're checking into a short-term rental, that's right by somebody else's house, where that's their permanent residence. I, I don't know. I wouldn't want to include hotels in hotels.
Yeah, the other, something that one of the resort heads made, explained to me, is that the hotels are actually better set up to do the cleaning and maintenance than the industry is with, you know, short-term house rentals, because it's a more standard, you know, we actually inspect hotels, right, as a county, so.
Yeah, not rooms.
Oh, it's not just rooms? It's, okay, so it's different. But anyway, it's more-
But there are, they have, they have their standards.
So there's several hotels you're saying that are out in the unincorporated areas? Well, what about inns and bed and breakfasts? I don't know if there's any inns.
There's, yeah, there are. There's some guest, guest lodges, guest ranches.
There's a guest ranch right up by me. Long Hollow? A dude ranch.
Yeah. We haven't talked about that.
No, I know. I haven't heard from, haven't heard from them.
I support keeping all that, all that in, except the RV parks at this time.
You want to make them not be able to be rented unless it's for 30 days? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, to remove the RV parks from this order at this time. And that, if that comes up, we'll add it, you know, in a week or so.
Commissioner Henderson, what do you think about not allowing people to stay in a hotel unless it's for 30 days? Is that what we're saying?
Well, unless you fall into one of the exemptions that you haven't really gotten to yet.
Right. I mean, if you're a medical provider, you're caring for a family member.
Well, Tethro actually said yesterday that they had closed their hotel. Isn't that what, I think that's what I heard him say. And I, and Sun River has. I mean, they're, I don't know if it's exactly a hotel, but their rooms are, they're not, not overnight rentals. They're, I think it's the Sun River Lodge or something it's called, but.
Yeah, Sun River.
Yeah, that's closed.
That's closed.
And I think Tethro has, too.
Tethro, I can't remember if they have a hotel. I know they have a whole series of cabins.
No, they have a hotel. They have, they have actual lodging units on this, on the other side of the restaurant.
I don't recall.
Do you recall, Commissioner DeBonne, yesterday, whether, the Tethro, didn't he say?
Property.
What's that?
Yeah. He said the phones have stopped ringing. That was one of the statements that was stated yesterday. So really, things have stopped. They're offering full refunds in the next 60 days, and then after that, you know, their reservations are on the books. They haven't made decisions about that at this time.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the vacationing public has already made decisions on what they're doing.
Yeah, a lot have. And that's what was clear yesterday, too, was that they've already self-done it. So you're suggesting taking hotels and motels out. Commissioner DeBonne's taking, suggesting taking RV parks out, but not, I mean, there's not, we're doing something, there's not unanimous support by various places about it, I'm sure. I mean, that's, that's clear. So what, no matter which we take out or leave in? I was glad that there is some support of it from some of the places, though, so that was good.
That's good to know.
Yeah. Oh, another one would be at the Inn at Seventh Mountain, is all of that stuff. There's a lot of, I don't know, most of them are timeshares now, but that would qualify here, wouldn't it, all the timeshares?
Sure.
Or if that should be listed.
Dave?
Certainly, we could add it as, I guess, a smaller subset of, of short-term rentals.
Like short-term rental houses and timeshares? See, there's a lot of, lot of the activity in parts of Eagle Crest, was, at least originally, it was timeshares. That was how it really built from a trailer out. I don't know how many units there are at this point.
This is Nick. I'm sure we could find that number out for you. Timeshares do qualify for destination resorts to meet their overnight lodging requirements, so certainly something to consider.
Okay.
Well, and the statement above does include health, safety, employment, and consent of executive order of the governor. So there's, there's still an opportunity for people to need to do short-term rentals for business, employment, and health and safety.
Point number two you're referring to.
Yes.
Okay. So Dave, do we need some more agreement here on item three?
I think maybe what might be best, I believe I've heard enough that I could quickly revise the draft order that you folks have, and maybe get something back to you here in the next 15 minutes that you could kind of look at and have it refined down a little bit more.
Okay.
So the word in there, go from highly discouraged to prohibited? Is that what we do?
Uh, yes, I've actually, I'm going through and getting rid of discouraged, putting prohibited, and making edits consistent with that.
Thank you. And so on item five, we're good with leaving it for stays longer than 30 days?
Yeah, I had written down May 22nd, I believe, and I don't know if that's the date you want to stick with or not.
We wanted to match the Sun River Resort letter. Did anybody find that date, Eric?
15th, May 15th.
Okay, May 15th.
That's the Friday before, the 22nd is the Memorial Day Friday. So, May 15th, that's, that's six weeks or no more, yeah.
Okay. I think, I think that's a good match.
So Dave, did you get my changes to that last whereas that I'd suggested?
Uh, yeah, with the cease and desist.
Yeah, may, I'll read it if you want, real quick, as best as I have, as best I can read. Whereas if nonessential travel and lodging persists or increases, the county may establish enforcement by further order imposing mandatory penalties for allowing nonessential short-term lodging within the county, including penalties for decease and desist, or financial penalties for violation, something like that.
Sure, I can, I can grab that. I was a little unclear, though, on the item number three of the actual order and the laundry list. Were we including? three of the actual order and the laundry list. Were we including hotels? Was the only thing being excluded from that list RV parks or was something else being excluded?
You know what? If people are already not going to the hotels, I don't have a problem with them being left in there. If you just want to take out the RV parks? What do you think, Commissioner Henderson?
Well, I was kind of moving towards your original position because I'm, I don't know much about the motel and hotel business and I guess I see the resorts are a little more favorable to doing this too because they do represent those. I mean, they know that the people that live out in those resorts, a lot of them are a long time. There's a different population group whereas a motel is all, everybody there is transient.
Right.
And everybody in hotels transient, whereas-
That's what you expect.
The issue with these resorts is that there's long-term residents and short-term and we have a collision of the two. So I, I was actually moving towards taking the motels and hotels out because it's a different kind of interaction. It doesn't, the people from there don't necessarily end up on the same cart paths or the bike paths or, you know, affecting the same, a different population that, the same way. So I, I was moving towards taking those out.
With that also.
Okay, so we'll take them out then?
So remove hotels, motels, and RV parks?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're on it.
But hey, Dave, did you get clarity on, or as the board talked about it, in the enforcement mechanism?
Yeah, I gave him the wording. We're just putting it as a whereas for now because we need to, it's, it becomes the last whereas in here. It's modified, so it brings up the issue of enforcement. We haven't figured out yet what the enforcement would be, is what I was suggesting.
With a cease and desist, a mandatory-
Or, or financial.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another small part of this too is I think we should do a press release that, the positive of doing this is we may, you know, it looks, we get to make the point that by doing this where resorts will be better able and that, you know, their area will be better able to welcome back the tourists, you know, the short-term users once everything's, the tornado has passed.
I think that's a good point and I started working on a draft and I'll wait to see Dave's revision, but my hope is that we could have that ready to go out as soon as you're ready so we can, to Dave's point, notify folks and get the word out there. So I definitely will save this draft and make updates once Dave has the revised document and then get that to the board for a review.
When our president yesterday had a two-hour and 11-minute press conference talking about these issues and the numbers, the fact that they, the death spread was from 100,000 to 240,000, I believe that that shows us how serious this is and, you know, we need to let our community know that we, we want to keep them as safe as possible. So, thank you, Whitney. Okay, so we are at test, test recording? Is that at you?
Yeah, actually I think we covered that as part of the initial briefing already this morning.
That's what I kind of thought, but I looked at it and I went, whoa, are we going to have some more testing? Okay. All right, so we can do, now we're at external communications.
All right, perfect. I will be brief.
Are you getting a cold?
No, I have really bad allergies.
Allergies, it's the jennifers.
And I know it's a horrible time to do that, but yes.
Okay.
Um, I have a draft press release that I think the board has seen that would be issued jointly with the sheriff and I emailed an updated version of that out earlier today. I just wanted to, and we can totally take, we can handle this offline as well, but I think we're at a place where I can communicate back with Sergeant Bailey and we can work on getting that out unless I was missing, I just wanted to check in with the board and make sure that we were comfortable with where that draft was at.
I was.
I was fine with it, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes, I would be able to review it also.
Okay, perfect. So I will coordinate with Sergeant Bailey and we will get that on its way. The second item that I just wanted to touch base on is that, as you know, Fair and Expo routinely uses billboards to advertise upcoming events and right now, given the impact of what's going on with the status of their events, they have some open billboard space that they've graciously, you know, offered to collaborate with us on and if, if it was helpful, use for COVID-19-related messaging. So I had sent a few kind of draft concepts forward for the board's consideration and again, this is also something that if you want to, we can tackle offline, but I just wanted to check in on generally, is that a concept that you'd support repurposing that billboard space for this type of messaging and/or do you want to delve into discussing what that messaging might look like today?
Did you like my idea? I know. Well, I mean, it's such a serious subject, but I just thought it would catch people and it would catch kids' attention maybe. I don't know. Do they still make lifesavers?
I'm sure, I'm sure that they-
Eat all the candies?
Got them for Christmas.
Okay, well, anyway, I was thinking like, okay, we can each be a lifesaver, but, you know, just having a visual picture there, it's, people can re, some people, the way they learn can remember things better and you'll never eat a lifesaver the same the rest of your life.
What was your suggestion? I haven't heard-
Well, mine was putting with the billboard that said each of us can be a lifesaver, but over to the side have like a lifesaver package on the billboard, you know, with little lifesavers running around or-
I'm good with that.
Or-
I think, I agree with the visual stuff. People notice it.
Yeah, they'll remember it more in the-
I think we should have three or four that we rotate though, you know?
Well, each one of them costs so much though, don't they? It's like there's seven of them.
Oh, you mean our billboards, not our blinking light one at the fairgrounds? You mean an actual billboard?
We need billboards, yeah.
Oh.
My understanding and I, is that they're, I'm assuming on an annual contract for that space and so they-
Who does the, is it Carlson?
I think we work with Carlson.
Carlson and they've done so much for the community where they've done all the restaurants signs, to-go signs. I mean, they did those for free for restaurants and I thought that was, you know, they've been part of our community forever. So that's really a great thing.
So that bottom message, there's two options there and that bottom message I think is the one that seems to be ringing home with the majority of folks that have read through it. But again, I'm happy to tinker with the messaging offline, just in the interest of that it is now April and we're kind of talking about April's billboard space. If we were going to move forward, I just wanted to make sure that we maximize-
It takes a while for them to put it together, so we need to get that to them soon. The other thing, I think the candy's cuter, but you could actually use lifesavers like on a pool too, you know, that says, that would be another idea. I don't know what they're going to think, but I just thought visualization, you know, you, you've seen the other billboards. The nurses number-
Yeah.
Is up, right, coming into town from Sisters. So that's good.
Well, that's another idea of kind of a more straightforward message that we could push is just echo the hotline information. I hadn't actually, that's another good suggestion, actually.
The 541, 59, uh, 699, 51409?
You know, it's, the other thing, depending when it gets done, you know, that it's, as you know, I've been advocating for the face masks and, you know, the federal government's now thinking about it. And it might be by the time we get a billboard up, it would, you know, protect yourself and your friends by-
We could have a picture with all of it in our face mask.
Yeah, no, well, yeah. I'm actually serious. If you look at what these other places are doing, that's, everybody looks that way. And, and then, and that could become the new normal by the time we get a billboard up. It's, I bet they're going to decide this week whether they start advising that, but-
Definitely.
They're definitely, Dr. Conway's saying that, you know, the mask, Jeff Whitberg's saying masks are really, they're, you know-
Well, my wife was way ahead of all that. She just swears by it.
Well, and South Korea was saying it, right. And look at their numbers.
And all the medical people are doing. I don't know, that'd be something to pay attention to for a couple of days.
Maybe we'll hold for a few days and see. That would be also a really strong visual that would catch people's eye. So, yeah. Let's give it a day or two and then I'll circle back with the board at the end of this week if that sounds-
Okay, we need to do something fast.
I, I am, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, and then can I hit the legislative update really quick and then I'll, is that-
Yeah, you're, you're next.
Of course you can.
Let me put you together.
This is the brief update, which it was in the bulletin as well this morning that Phil Schreier sent, was that the special session will not be occurring this week and we will, he's going to send more information as soon as he has it, but it doesn't look like this week will be the week.
Yeah.
We already knew that yesterday. It was on our call. It's-
Okay.
Lynn Finn, I said the same thing. He thought it'd be several weeks out.
Okay.
Because he, he's the senator of the north end of Deschutes County, represents Patty.
He's my senator.
Or senator, but he's on the committee. He's on that special committee.
Okay, so you're-
Yeah, well, we did, we just happened to get it yesterday, but it was interesting because he said several weeks. It's like, we're thinking about doing it Monday or Tuesday. Now it's, but I think what they're realizing is they want to have a session that fills gaps in the federal legislation.
Oh, interesting, so they want-
And, and so they want to wait to see what the gaps are. I think that's a big part of it.
Okay.
And then they also have to negotiate something that they can get through quickly. They don't, so they got to get both parties on board, but-
Yep.
The other problem is that our rural hospitals are asked to not have any patients in them. They are losing millions of dollars and in the federal package, it was only 150 million for rural hospitals. So that is really going to affect, you know, John Day and Umatilla and all these teeny, Morrell County has a teeny hospital. I mean, yeah, it's not going to work and there's going to be a huge hole.
Okay. Well, that was it. And if there's any feedback on the legislative concepts that we had shared earlier this week or anything else that you'd like, just feel free to let us know. Lauren and I will track that down for you.
I did confirm that that TRT stuff was in that legislative concept on page 13. It's just a big section there. I remember, maybe we're going to tell, Phil didn't know that, so we were going to tell him that, but we could send him the package that-
I will, yeah.
That we'd gotten or something because that was, I don't know. Looking at what the TRT, that was really interesting in the COVID meeting yesterday that how the projection, I was glad you clarified that we don't really know what the numbers are, but when you see that, it's like, well, how are they going to tap that tax to pay for things, which is what their goal was, when the tax is going to go to, you know, down to so low? It's like, you won't even be able to support all the things you're supposed to support with it. Why would you then tax it to, to save business? I mean, it was just interesting.
I was asking if they were going to retro it originally when that came out. I go, well, then are you going to go back to the first of the year and let us reallocate to the first of the year?
Well, there, but if you look at who we're supposed to be sending it to, there's no money left over. I mean, all, like, things like, the opposite question is really true. Should we figure out a different way to fund like COVID? I mean, they were looking at 20% of what they normally get. It's a, how much is it a month? It's-
Uh, it's several, or I want to say 100, 150,000 per month.
Per month, and so they're going to like 30,000 instead. So it's not, there's not money to spend on other things. It's, should we be doing something to backstop that, so?
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
You know, the other thing they said in that meeting yesterday, a lot of them were very optimistic in terms of the rebound, you know, that-
Yeah.
They thought maybe there's going to be pent-up demand was used following, you know, when we do get to the point where on the, on the far end of this pandemic that, you know, they, they're pretty bullish on, you know, there being, you know, a quick return to bookings and, you know, fairly healthy summer.
Yeah, if we, if it gets over, that's, yeah, it was optimistic.
Yeah, the market only went down 973 points today.
Maybe less optimistic now.
Yes. Don't want to look at that? It's almost 21,000? Okay, optimistic. That's good news. Event permits, who's?
Yeah, I, I just put that on there. We had a discussion in the executive session on Monday. There was, there was a couple additional comments that came in from the sheriff's office, nothing really formal. So I, I don't know that that's exactly right for a discussion today. You know, we've, Eric has, has taken a look at, you know, other event permits that we have booked through his office or through our event as opposed to CDD who does mass gatherings and the, you know, like Four Peaks and, and other kind of venue-related land use approvals. But we do have a series of events that are scheduled over the next few months that, again, hasn't necessarily been a formal request, but we, we have a list we can share with the board and if you want to take a look at some kind of a, you know, a prohibition or a limitation of our specified timeframes on, on scheduled events, we can certainly have that discussion. But, you know, since we haven't shared the list with you, we can do that, you know, this week and then, and then maybe-
Yeah, we could get the list and then discuss it on Monday. Would that be good?
Sure.
Unless Eric, is there one of you who needs to talk to us about?
No, I mean, I have the list with me, but I can do it later.
Okay, that would be, that would be great.
We did have one add-on item that just kind of late-breaking news as of today, a grant opportunity, emergency grant. I think, I'm not sure if Janice is on the phone to speak to that or if Eric, you were going to cover that?
She is prepared to get on. Let me let her know.
And I'd ask Greg to come down and say something just about finances if he could give us just a few minutes.
Oh, is he able to come?
Yeah, well, that was, I thought it would be, oh, several hours ago.
Optimistic. I'm on the, commissioners, I'm on the phone here. Can you hear me okay?
We surely can.
So part of that was, part of that was me asking Patty if you could come. So I had some specific questions, but I don't know what you can ask.
I had questions too because originally I had sent him, I'd asked him, I'd heard that Creek County was going to support some of their businesses that were having cash flow problems. And so I'd sent him a message about, you know, stay strong, Deschutes County. Then we had our EDCO meeting and we found out the range of our, of the business issues and, you know, Greg is saying that there is a group, they're working with people that have deep pockets and what they can come up with for our, you know, our county to help. You know, we have our grant program for people that have employees, but, and what did our revenue look like for the fourth quarter? It's kind of, I was wondering if he had any idea on that.
Yeah, I can address that if you'd like. You want to talk about Central Oregon SOS?
I don't know any, I know it's been set up, but I don't know, are we, are we tied to that somehow or?
We might have millions funding with it.
Let me give you, I can give you a little bit of background if you'd like. Couple weeks ago, Katie Brooks from the Chamber of Commerce approached us, I think she approached Commissioner DeBonne and then my-
Hello.
Oh, Janice. Oh, gosh.
Yes, hi.
Hi, now we've got two people on the phone. Janice, could you come back in maybe like 10 minutes? Would you mind? Does that work or not for you?
I'll just stay, I'll just stay on the line and you let me know when you're ready for me.
Fabulous. Thank you, Janice. Okay.
Yep.
Greg, go ahead.
Back on it, okay. Her question was, is there something that we can be doing or should be doing in the community in Central Oregon to facilitate some sort of stopgap measures for the folks that are kind of falling through the graph, the gap, the financial gap, usually these are the small businesses. These are the folks that don't have unemployment insurance. They, they weren't compensated through a traditional payroll that paid into unemployment insurance. And is there something that can be done to provide a gap until federal assistance is available? I know I, I've been on a few calls with them as they're strategizing and brainstorming and I just talked again with Katie today and she said that it's, it will be called Bend SOS and it's affiliated with Main Street SOS, which is this, which I mentioned to you, Central Oregon SOS. There's, Commissioner Derry mentioned Creek County SOS. So there's a number of those in the region that have popped up here in the last couple of weeks. The thought here is that it'll roll out next week and they're going to test drive it, do a demonstration with 20 to 30 local businesses. And essentially what they're doing is offering a sale of purchasing future credit. So, and it would be in some kind of a form of a gift card. And really the concern there, I think, is really to help balance cash flow for businesses. So it would be some form of pre-selling, if you will. And they'll also have the opportunity for folks not only to purchase these future credits, but they can also donate. So it'll end up being a combination of loans, gifts, future sales, with the whole idea of bridging this gap until these folks can get on to federal assistance or loans through the SBA and some of the other programs that are available.
So how are they vetting who their first 20 are? I mean, what?
Yes.
I mean, is it?
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm not sure, but she did mention that that was a demonstration portion of the- Yeah, that's, that's, I'm not sure, but she did mention that that was a demonstration portion of the, of the, they want to test drive it, I think, and make sure they get it right before they roll it out. But it is coming out next week. She did tell me that.
But we're saying, we're calling it Bend SOS? So this isn't really.
That's what.
This isn't Deschutes County, this isn't Redmond.
Tumalo, Terrabon, Sisters, yeah, everywhere.
Okay.
So what he has, it is, and then in terms of vetting them also, are there certain industries? Are they going, like, is it the Mill District or Downtown Bend? Or is it the at-home people or what, you know, who? What do you know about that?
He did not get into.
So I can, I can step in. This is Commissioner DeBonne. Uh, the idea is to really do a, a dynamic, uh, quick evolving, um, kind of a ledger for these gift cards, uh, scalable. So, you know, the concept of a Bend SOS could be easily expanded to other chambers of commerce. So you get the, uh, you know, the process worked out, then you can duplicate it pretty quick. Uh, everybody's sensitive about Deschutes County, uh, you know, on the calls referring to any business. Uh, and it's just, it's kind of a high-tech nimble opportunity that some, you know, technology folks are trying to put together. Uh, it would be the gift card concept, future credits. Companies need to be responsible for what they're really offering, if they're going to be able to do something in the future. So it's kind of a dance right now, working in to see if this would work out. Uh, yeah, it's, it's discussions at this point. It's, it's not in place, but if it can be put in place pretty quick, it could be really valuable for some of the small businesses, uh, you know, that are ready for it.
When we say small business, what kind of money are we talking?
Uh, to be determined, you know, how much, uh, overhead and, uh, you know, future commitment a company wants to make. It's just an idea at this point and it's starting to get mature, but we'll see if it can, you know, really happen.
Well, did you have any more to add to what Greg said about the, um, what kind of businesses they are? Or what, you know, what the criteria are?
Uh, as I say, that's kind of evolving right now. Uh, it was mentioned, you know, if, if there's a subset of 20 businesses, that's where it could start to get some traction. Uh, it's, it's not defined, you know, it's not, nobody's in or out at this point. It's just, who does it make sense for?
Well, there were 500, or 471, uh, businesses on the EDCO report, existing businesses the other day. What are they, traded sector businesses? So, um, you know, I know there's, there are a lot of businesses out there. So, okay, all right.
Hey, good.
Greg, can you give us any update then on the fourth quarter revenue? What might we expect?
Just in general, or is there something?
Well, in, okay, so, you know, we've got our, uh, the property tax. Third payment is due May 15th. Uh, our room tax is going down rapidly.
Gas taxes.
Yeah, there's no gas, the gas is building up, it's going to go into the Federal Reserve. Yeah, what kind of numbers are we looking at? So that's going to definitely affect the road department, is it not?
Yeah, let me give you, um, let me give just the things that are on my radar right now. So, um, obviously one of them is our property taxes. I, I don't have, uh, the, because our, uh, third trimester collections are such a small component and that at the end of this year, I, I don't have a lot of, uh, we haven't looked at that in detail yet because it is relatively small compared to some other concerns. But I did want to mention to you about next year, because that's where, still quite a bit unknown, but a lot of us remember the impact of the Great Recession 10 years ago or so. Um, so I want to let you know that the assessed value for the county is based on 2019 assessments. So as of January 1, 2020, we set those values and that's what we levy our taxes against. So those numbers are already set for the next fiscal year. The January of 2020 sets the values for property taxes for fiscal year 21, July. And to give you some context on that, we've had, just on growth year over year, and I'll go over this again with you during budget time. So in fiscal 1920, our assessed value growth was 5.36%. In fiscal 19, the year before that, it was 5.78%. Number we've used to build the budget for next year is 5%. So we're a little, little bit conservative in terms on our AB growth. Now, the number where we think, go ahead.
So just so you know, I, I think, uh, if, it depends on the size of the recession, but I'm in, in support of reducing that sum, because I, I think if, it doesn't make sense that our taxes go up 5% or everybody keeps their 3% increase when we're in a recession. So this, we haven't had a discussion about that, but I'm, I'm not in favor of it being that high next year unless the economy is doing well for everybody, because it just means we're taking a bigger share. So I don't know, we'll have to talk about that. But it's easy to increase the assessed because the gap between market value and assessed value is so huge. This is what happened the last recession, it just kept going up all through the recession. So I don't know, I just, I don't know how far, how we factor it in, but when you're balancing things, we probably should have that discussion sometime.
Yes, sooner rather than later.
Because it's.
Yeah, yep, so, uh, in conversations with the assessor, the assessed value is, is already, it's already set based on 2019 values.
Oh, the assessed.
Assessed value.
Well, there's two different aspects of that. Uh, the, the value of new construction is part of it, not just the X amount of a value of a home. So when somebody builds a new home, that's new value on the tax rolls. And then it's assessed at how much its value is in the market. So when we say 5% assessed value growth, it's new homes and new construction coming online. And then there's the other aspect of it is, has it held its value?
Yeah, that's true. So I just wanted to give you two quick points on property taxes. One is assessed value and the other part is the collections rate. And the last couple of years, we, our collection rate, the amount of the levy we actually collect in the year that it's assessed, has been just under 96%. So you'll see us talk about current year taxes and prior year taxes. The current year taxes that we collect have been almost 96% of the levy. The other 4% or four plus percent ends up being collected in the ensuing years. But that's where we've seen, um, at least during the recession, those numbers for collection rates were down in the low 90s for several years. So in the original budget projections, we were looking at a 95, a little bit better than a 95% collection rate. And I believe that there is, um, the likelihood that that could go down. So for every one percentage point it goes down, it's equivalent to about $330,000 in property tax and general funds, so it's fairly significant. Those are the property, those are the property tax numbers I want to share with you real briefly.
So we don't have to do it today, um, but I'd be interested in you doing kind of a similar thing on the, what you expect gas taxes? I, is what Commissioner Derry was asking, what the gas taxes, how much they'll be in the last quarter of this year? And then I think by budget time, have some estimate what we're, next year. And then the same with TRT, because it seems like both of those are going to take a big dive. And I, I don't know, it'll affect our ability to operate right now, but it'll affect planning and, uh, that's, that's what you were asking, wasn't it? Yeah.
That is what I was asking, because when you heard the, um, reserves of, um, gas this morning on the, uh, the Nationwide Report, it was, it was what, 15, whatever? It was, they were thinking it was going to be like six or seven million and it was like triple, whatever. So, yeah, it's really, it's, nobody's driving.
Yeah.
Nobody in America's driving. So that means probably nobody in Oregon is driving either.
Let me give you a couple more updates here.
Thank you.
Got time.
Okay.
Um, you mentioned, you mentioned TRT, so I want to give you a couple of data points. So for this fiscal year, we were on track to collect 8.57 million dollars in TRT. And you'll remember that number because we were often talking about, we were 12%, 12.5%, 12.6% ahead of last year's collection.
Yes, we were, weren't we?
Yeah, so that was the track we were on until the current situation hit. Then after conversations with, uh, COVA and some proprietor, uh, logic proprietors, a few other folks, we re-projected that down for, to reduce the collections for the last three months of this year by 90%. So that April, May and June collections would go down by 90%. So where that puts us is a revised projection of 7.3 million in TRT. That's down about $350,000 from last year's collection. And it's about $400,000 down from the original budget for this year.
How much from this budget?
400,000?
400, 400,000.
Okay.
So those are going to mean, we've committed beyond, we've committed beyond.
Give you those numbers again.
Have.
Right.
Uh, the contract with COVA is they get a percentage of what we actually receive, so they don't get a budgeted, a straight budgeted amount.
What about all those other people that we give TRT money to? Don't we, isn't that where we, uh, give some of our money?
That's lottery.
Oh, TRT doesn't go to any other entities, okay.
Other than the sheriff's office.
The sheriff's, okay.
And what about the sheriff then? If it doesn't come in, he doesn't get it?
Yeah, well, um, as you recall, and we can certainly talk about this more when Greg's in front of you. TRT, we, we actually have a little bit of a surplus in what we've collected beyond the commitments to the sheriff and, uh, Fair and Expo and what's committed to COVA. So we have a little bit of a cushion there we can work with. I, at this point, I don't see any, um, reason why we wouldn't be able to meet the obligation to give the sheriff's office the money that's in the budget. Greg can correct me if I'm wrong.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt. Um, Janice has a meeting at 3 o'clock.
Okay, so we need to, uh, Greg, is there anything else you wanted to go over? Um, we do need your input, Janice, now.
Let me just give you a couple of quick ones. So for next year, for TRT, we're estimating 80% collections for next year of what we originally thought we were going to collect this year. So, um, the message is, is that we are making some revised projections based on the best we think right now. But again, it's a crystal ball, it's made out of granite and it's, um, uh, it's going to be changing probably on a month and month basis, but we're on top of it and paying attention to it. I've talked to you about interest earnings, uh, usually at least monthly. I just want to let you know that the LGIP, the state, or Oregon State Treasury just advised us that as of tomorrow, the pool rate will be dropping from 2% to 1.75%. So this, basically what this means to us is it'll push our average return to two, probably around 2%. And what we forecasted in the budget for next year, um, is 1.8%. It's something we might need to look at again as we finish to build our budgets and maybe even reduce that down further.
Okay.
Uh, on a, on the bright side, we have, we haven't made our $13 million deposit yet with PERS. It's not due until May 18th. The good news is, is that, if there is good news, if there's a silver lining here, is that the value of the O-PERF, the retirement fund, has declined. Um, I wasn't able to get exact numbers, but they told me about 7.5% to 8%, though no more as time goes on. But what this will allow us to do is, is to buy into an investment at a lower, lower value. So it's, it's a good thing that we waited to make the deposit.
That was really smart, wasn't it, Greg?
Well, don't wait too long before the market might go up.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, and then the last point I had here, and this ties back into gas taxes, is, uh, state funding makes up about 25% of our overall revenue source for the county. And, uh, one of my concerns is the, uh, living through this in the education world, when your money, your funding is tied to the state, it's, um, I think there's going to be some issues with state revenue. So we're going to look into that some more. Gas tax, I think, is number one or number two in terms of the component of state funding that we actually receive. So we'll be looking at that as well.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you, Greg, for, uh, pulling that all together for us today. It's.
You betcha.
It's too important that we don't hear what's going on today. Gives us something to think about when we're sleeping, doesn't it, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Commissioner DeBonne, yes, love it. Um, Janice, you need to get on?
Sure, if you're ready for me.
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, this is, uh, very brief. Um, we have the opportunity to apply for some Central Oregon Health Council funds that have just been made available in reference to the COVID, um, crisis. They're offering out of their Regional Health Improvement Plan, work groups, um, $25,000 per work group in $5,000 increments, so small grant amounts, to do any number of things that directly address the work group's goals. We want to apply for a $5,000 grant to purchase, uh, phones for clients who are indigent or homeless and have no other way to participate in services. Um, there are, it's pretty straightforward, it's simply a, a small cash grant. Um, the application is fairly simple, it's submitted online and then it's voted on by the work group. We will likely apply to the Behavioral Health Access Work Group. And we are requesting the Board of County Commissioners permission to apply for those funds.
Great, oh my gosh, thank you so much.
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, I think it's good.
Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner votes yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, have a good day.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, bye-bye.
Is there any chance we can just speak to Dr. Possett or does he, do you think he's with patients all on the. Yes, I saw that little memo that's coming down, because we have a 3:30 that we really had yesterday, but we're going to have it today just because, right? Oh.
Is that with the city?
Yes, the city.
The other thing I was thinking, maybe Greg could come up, I don't know if it's Greg or if it's Laura who, you know, we got the request for several, um, small grants from, you know, different nonprofits. I think we should look at, is there, you know, how much money we have left in our lottery fund and whatever else? And see if, you know, I do think we should think about whether we're going to give extra money to people that are going to be losing money or, um, we're s- more solid than a lot of entities because we're, we already do have our property taxes and so, and then the, the, the lottery's going to fall off. But I, so I don't know, maybe we won't have anything left, but.
That, that's scheduled for Monday.
Is it? Okay, yeah, so you're coming in with all that stuff?
Yeah, it's, uh, Laura and Whitney will do that, that normal, um, allocation exercise that we do each year. And they'll have as best they can in working with the states, um, estimates on what we have to work with.
Cause I, I like the ones that, the new ones that came up with all the, you know, I, all but one. And then, but I would think there's some other entities. I mean, like I wonder with COVA, whether we should, you know.
No.
Not just wait for, you don't think we should just wait for?
I think, I think they have resources that will allow them to weather this.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
They didn't mention that too much yesterday. They said they had some reserve funds, but I didn't know what that meant.
So we have five funding requests in what?
We needed the other day.
Yeah, it gave us, so that was, um, excellent to see that, um.
But there's probably others that are coming. And so it's like, how do we prepare?
This one was already, well, this one is, was due by yesterday for our, um, our fourth quarter allocations.
But I'll bet there's people wanting, that are going to be in need, is all I'm saying that. And what I was saying to Tom was really that we're better suited than a lot of people to, I don't know.
There's, uh, you know, since we had the conversation on Monday also, um, we got some additional information. Part of that federal package is, um, nonprofits are.
501(c)(3)es.
Yeah, so we. Yeah, so we've been.
Well, it is, yeah, that's what we wondered.
Yeah, there is a portion in there.
So we've added links to our website just for nonprofits that we can share also. Not that we wouldn't help them directly, but there is that secondary resource.
One thing I heard at Ready today was that if, you know, if you want to get these SBA loans, you have to have your taxes done, but they've extended the tax deadline to July, so all the tax accounts are in a dilemma, you know, people aren't wanting to get their taxes done because they may owe money, but they need their taxes done to qualify for the loans, and that's true with individuals, too. To get the, I don't know what you call it, the stimulus money or the $1,200 check, you have to have done your taxes, and if you're not used to doing your taxes, or you don't have them done, you wouldn't be able to, that's what somebody, he was saying, the accountant was saying.
Does that include your corporate activity tax?
Well, they haven't, no, I don't think that's part of it, I think, because that's still in limbo, I think, but you have to have your, see, corporate taxes are due May, March 15th, and then typically personally, April 15th, but I don't know, interesting.
So Dr. Posit, okay, so maybe we can put you on for Monday? If we, yeah, if it's available. Okay, so we're just waiting, Commissioner DeBonne, we're just waiting for Samantha to bring down the adjustments made by legal for the vacation rental.
And Commissioner DeBonne, you should have, you should have that in your email. Dave Doyle included you on the original email.
Yep. I can, I just saw the email, so I'll open it up now.
Is this our last thing?
Yes. I hope so.
What do we have? One more piece of paper.
Oh, we just added three more on the list today. So we're now at 27. I was hoping we wouldn't be on that, but okay.
So are we changing, oh, I have a question about, who's in charge of what? So, you know, I was pushing to change that webpage that shows up on our webpage about the data, and I thought Whitney had already done that, or was doing that yesterday, and I got the feeling today that what Jan, or Heather was saying was, well, if we can't get the data, we'll put it on there. Is that our, or is that, are we in charge of that thing that shows up on our website, or is somebody else?
Do you mean the release that has the three county logos on it that comes out every evening?
No, the, well, if I go on my webpage, the county webpage, and I, over on the right, lower right's all the COVID stuff.
We are in charge of that.
So.
It's, well.
I don't know why we just don't add some text in there saying this, what you see below is a partial report of, you know, tests, negative tests, or something that just clarifies, because we recognize it two days ago, and then when I heard today is, well, they'll do it if they don't get all this stuff from St. Charles.
There she is.
So we are in charge of that?
Whitney did the rescue.
I just heard the beginning of your question, and then I came downstairs, you were asking about.
Oh. Well, that, that web, what I've played about on the website, that, where it doesn't have all the negatives tests, and why don't we just, I thought it'd be pretty easy to say that information contained here is not all tests done in the county, it's those that have been reported. We're working on getting.
That's exactly what we put up.
It says up there now, okay, well, it sounded like Heather was waiting to put anything up, so I was like.
What Heather was referring to is the updated information, so once we have that additional data, those numbers will change, but the disclaimer did go up yesterday.
I'm just glad you followed up on it, I didn't think it'd be that hard to get the stuff, so I'm glad you're working on it.
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
So I see we're at 27?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
I haven't looked at it then, is what I guess I'm saying. I thought she was saying she was going to do it after. So is this the order we're supposed to look at?
Right, please. You could look at that order?
So one thing, Dave, on that last paragraph on the first page, a lot of people don't know what the B-O-C-C is, but I know we do, but I, we're the only ones that know a lot of these acronyms, some of them we don't know, like me.
It took me a while to figure that one out, actually.
The B-O-C-C?
Yeah, like B-O-C-C.
Well, the E-O-C was the one, yeah.
What was that? Yeah, if you could add, if you could link them that, that would be great. Oh, Dave, on page two, responsive to, doesn't have a split between it, it was an error on the first copy, on the second to last paragraph.
All right, so. Dave, are you on the line?
Were you asking a question of me?
No, I was telling you, the second paragraph to the last on page two, in the second line of that paragraph, responsive, space to this crisis, there's no space.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to see, what am I looking at?
Second to the last paragraph, the second line of that paragraph, responsive, and there needs to be a space between responsive and to.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't, okay?
Is it there?
Now, is this going to affect people that have come to their second home, because it says in here that they need to remain at their permanent residence?
Where's it say that?
Item number two, individuals are encouraged to remain at their place of permanent residence.
Well, we're not prohibiting them coming, we're just saying.
They're encouraged.
You, your main residence is in Portland, why don't you stay there? But I know what you're saying, but I think it's okay the way you say it, because I think that is the general philosophy.
They're encouraged, just.
Encouraged to remain at their place of permanent residence, but if they do, but, you know, I think you're, you know, it's all right the way it is. What about the, in the last, in number four, Dave, you put in that, another persons or categories of people who the county administrator deems consistent with the intent of this order, after consultation with local public health administrator, do you think that we missed a category, or?
Well, that's the purpose, is if we did miss something, that there'd be an option without coming back for a subsequent order, and I kind of carried that over from the other jurisdictions, Lincoln County in particular, that identified that type of process in consultation with the local public health administrator. Certainly, we could pull that out if you're not comfortable, I just wanted to be as expansive as I could be, figured it'd be easier to cut things out rather than to add things in.
I just wonder, I don't know what they did in the other counties, or why they did it, would it put a, Tom, at a position where people could lobby him to do, I don't know, I don't know who we might have missed, but.
I suppose, because it does require consultation with the local public health administrator. We could put in, you know, and appropriate findings and support.
Who's lovely, local public health administrator, is that?
George.
George?
Dr. Conway.
Dr. George, yes.
I mean, there's no enforcement mechanism in the current order here, so if, in the off-chance that someone, I mean, they're not really faced with a ticket or else, we're establishing sort of the initial parameters. If there is some category we hadn't thought of, you know, it's not like my decision is going to decide whether they get a ticket or not, it's just kind of refining the definition. If it's something that's controversial or a big category, then I'm certain that I would send an FYI to the Commissioners, and we can bring it up at the next meeting. The only, you know, now that I read that definition in four, the only one honestly that comes to mind is just, you know, people, but I suppose they wouldn't, they'd be over 30 days, I was just thinking of employment housing, you know, maybe a not, maybe a non-essential job that they perform, that they can't afford a place to live, so they're living in an RV park, except for RV parks have been exempted, so, yeah, that's probably, probably thinking too hard on this.
Well, no, you've got a point, I think that's what, one or two of them that we've saw, saw did say, was something about people that are there. Another category was people that are there, if we do this, of course, I don't know if they'd be in any of these resorts, where we do the, where we're buying.
Housing.
Housing for hotels.
He arranged to be made with the three hotels, but those are, aren't they?
They're just in hotels, okay.
They're in the city of Bend.
Oh. So do you have wording you'd suggest?
Me?
Yeah.
No, the examples I was thinking of, they're, they're actually longer than 30 days, because I, some people I know who can't afford a place to live, they rent an RV spot, I don't know that they rent a vacation rental or stay in a hotel, it's usually RVs and other places, or a month-to-month lease, so I think they're probably exempted from this policy from the
Should we put in here something about, there's nothing in here about how you, we amend it. Should we put anything in there about it, or?
Do we need to add that, Dave?
The last whereas indicates that if you're not getting the type of compliance you're hoping for, that there probably be additional orders to articulate whatever the penalties at that point would be. I thought that's what I heard the board saying, was they weren't prepared today to address the penalties or enforcement piece, but to put that in that final whereas, which is what I tried to capture.
I was more thinking of if, along the lines of what Tom was saying, that if there was some category that we should have put in that we didn't, that was an exemption, because we haven't, you know, it'll probably come up if somebody thinks of it, so there may be some category.
I think I can ask the county administrator and consult with the public health administrator.
Okay. I think it looks good.
Okay. Just with the B-O-C-C spelled out and that one typo.
Responsive to spread out.
Okay, I caught the one typo, I'm sorry, where's B-O-C-C?
It's on the first page, the very bottom, it says B-O-C-C, would you please say what B-O-C-C is?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we.
I'll make that change and get it to Samantha, and she could bring down a clean copy for you folks.
Okay, great, well, we'll be, we'll probably be upstairs shortly.
Just approve it as amended.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the order number 2020-017 as amended.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion?
No, I think it looks good, and we made our comments during our debate.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Well, yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Sharon.
So we can probably get the one to sign when we go upstairs, unless we have something else, right?
No, that'd be great, we can go upstairs and sign.
So are we going to release it tomorrow morning, then, Whitney, is that what you're thinking?
I have a draft release done, it's really up to the board in terms of when you'd like to, when this would go into effect and when you'd like to. Sorry, I don't like this microphone, sorry, Chair.
Oh, I didn't even notice, I was just thinking about it.
So does it, it goes into effect upon your signature, is that accurate? So it probably would be, if we could get a release out today, that would be timely.
The news is, want to know about it probably, don't they?
Yes. So I will get this draft printed and circulated for review and feedback, if that works.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Very much.
You put something in there about, we're doing this now with hopes it's better later type thing, or?
Yes.
That work on that concept?
Like, try to make it as positive as possible.
Yeah.
You're saving lives.
Got it.
Well, we're taking care of the, you know, long-term members of our community.
Right.
You know, that voiced a concern.
Okay, so, do we have any further business? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, for being our fearless navigator of our technical system, so thank you, everyone. Okay, now we may adjourn. Thank you.